The views and opinions in this program are not those of CISA 7 or Spectrum.
I would entertain a motion, the first motion.
I moved that American Institutes for Research, AIR, be contracted to serve as the lead turnaround partner at Washington Middle School at a cost of $394,000 as presented, be approved.
Second.
You know, we've been talking about this for quite a while, both back in February, I think, when it was first announced at the press conference that we were going to be hiring a turnaround principal and then also contracting with a turnaround partner. So this is the partner that the administration has put forth after getting RFPs from a couple of, or a few different organizations that do this kind of work. Are there any questions or comments from board members at this point? Anyone?
Can I? Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to say a few words. As I shared with the board, this is a next step forward. It is a step about hope. It is a step about the future for Washington Middle School. The recommendation that was provided to you, and I know that you've had a chance to read the request for proposal that we are recommending move forward, really talks about some very transformational aspects of what will happen at Washington Middle School. As a lead turnaround partner, AIR has a proven concept, and I think that the piece that really sets them apart, we had, we went out with a request for proposal identifying key areas that we needed to see, moving us forward in our, in our request, focused really in on making sure that the people coming forward had a framework that would be sustainable around continuous improvement, that had diagnostic tools and steps to help develop not only a comprehensive needs assessment, but a school improvement plan with processes, metrics, accountability, and really focusing in on changing the climate and culture at Washington, bringing all stakeholders to the table, and ensuring, ensuring that as we went forward, everyone would be brought along in the process. So AIR was one of two proposals. The first one we received within the timeframe of March 14th through, or February 14th through March 1st. We did not receive any others at that time, and while we felt very confident with this proposal, we felt that it was important to make sure that we had also a comparative point to deal with. We knew, for example, that at Fort Howard Elementary, a school that has turned around over the last four years, our contracted services, albeit paid through the federal government, our contracted services for five years has been $990,000. So we knew that this would not be an inexpensive proposition. So we talked a lot about the various features of this particular proposal, primarily not only being researched and not only having proof of concept, but even talking with the people, they have walked the walk and talked the talk and turned around schools. And that's something that not everyone can say that they have done. I think what also set them apart when we looked at this particular proposal was the fact that they provide one-to-one coaching for the leaders, they provide professional development as well, they provide support for English language arts teachers as well as mathematics teachers. And talking recently with one of the principals where they are currently working, she talked about the significant improvement in a very short period of time, and how even after 12 years of being a principal at that school, she has learned a tremendous amount herself. One of the important pieces for us was building capacity and sustainability. And the question that John and Vicki and I proposed after reviewing over spring break, we were in different places, but conference calls afforded us the ability to really delve into these and ask more questions, really focused in on, will we be able to build capacity? Will this be open to others? And they assured us that there is, there is little that they can't, that we can't share. I think they have one proprietary tool, and that's in the assessment process, but after that, everything is available. They said any professional development that they would do, we could share out and invite other principals to join as well as staff. In addition to that, they also agreed to actually, John had proposed, can, can you come over and actually work with all of our principals and come to different meetings? They said yes, they could do that, and indicated that they've also worked in partnership with central office coaches as well. So with that, and in addition to, we asked about flexibility of this particular proposal based on the fact that if we didn't have the resources financially to support it, could we back it down? And they said yes, we could do that. And so there's a great deal of flexibility, and that's, I feel very confident in that. So as we looked forward, we wanted to make sure that we had the resources to be able to provide a successful implementation process. I think one of the keys that with this AIR proposal that's really pressing tonight is the fact that they need to start the needs assessment while the students and the staff are still here at Washington. And I think that one of the pieces that is important with that is that to be able to get the stakeholder voices and to be able to do a deep, deep data dive is really critical as they complete their school success plan. We're bringing in a new principal, and so collectively being able to move that forward is very important, and that's a time-sensitive piece. We're behind in the process somewhat for a variety of reasons. A lot of questions we put out there, the fact that we wanted to make sure we had another competitor in the process in the proposals was another reason and so forth. So as we look tonight, I think one of the pieces, and I'm going to invite John to talk about the fact that unfortunately, because of the sub shortage this year, we've had to back off on our professional development budget, but we do have some budgetary resources yet this year that we can invest in this endeavor.
Sure. So when we're looking at the needs of the district around professional learning, we put together a comprehensive plan each year based on the priorities of the district and the strategies that we're putting in place to meet these those priority areas. Over the course of the past couple of years, not just in Green Bay, but in all, all states, there's been a shortage of teachers. In addition to shortage of teachers, there's a shortage of subs. So quite often, we're wanting to be as responsible as possible and responsive as possible to the needs of the buildings. And as we're finding that we have sub failure quite often, particularly on Fridays and things when we might have a large professional development session scheduled, a lot of times during those, during those professional learning opportunities, we've had to pause those, those opportunities because we have to make sure that we have qualified teachers in front of each student. That is a response that happens throughout the year, but collectively, it's resulted in a fair amount of money that we have not spent on professional learning in this capacity. We're also realizing, though, that there's a deeper systemic need to understand how can we, how can we support schools that need a turnaround? We know how to build relationships, we know how to look at data and coach and move things in a trajectory that moves us towards success. But the science of, the science of being able to turn around a school in short order and be able to bring change in a very rapid process, that's something that's new and relatively cutting edge. It's something that, that's part of the reason why we ended up without having too many proposals because many of the entities that are out there providing service, they're already contracted and their plates are full because their, their work is effective. So when we realized we had this opportunity with some professional learning dollars, we looked at this as an opportunity for us to fund at least, at least the activities that would take place for, for the beginning stages. The first stages, Michelle mentioned, is the problem analysis where they go in deeply, they observe classrooms, they interview teachers, they spend extensive time at Washington digging deeply into what it is that, that we can do to move forward. But I think most importantly, it's what can we learn as well? Not just how are we helping Washington, but how are we enhancing our own skills as leaders of schools in learning how to not just move things in a positive trajectory, but how to move things in a steady pace and a quick pace, being able to affect change more rapidly? Because the kids need us. The kids that are there, sixth graders, will be out of the school in, in two more years. They don't have time to wait for five to seven years that a lot of people say deeper change takes, to take root. So we want to make sure that we're able to, to learn these sciences, apply it to Washington that's been seen as a district and community need, and do so in a timely fashion so that we can help Washington turn.
I think one of the, the other pieces that's important to recognize is that we have been working, and I have been specifically working with the largest school districts in the state of Wisconsin, recognizing the fact that we have the largest achievement gaps out there, particularly with certain student groups. And one of the pieces that I would offer that is important is the state of Wisconsin is also getting the support from the Wallace Foundation and the consultant and the work that they are bringing in is with AIR as well. So that alignment around an urban leadership institute and cohort aligns very nicely so we would have a coherent, seamless trajectory for our principals and for our leaders. So there are some other outside pieces that really factor in again to making sure that we have a coherent and comprehensive approach. I think one of the pieces that I care deeply about, and I know my colleagues do too, is the well-being of the children and families being served. Each child is deserving, and I think one of the concerns that I have is that we can wait if the board is needing more time. And again, that's, that certainly, certainly is, is up to you. But more importantly, the longer we wait, again, to Mr. Magus's point and to others, we are delaying opportunity that I think is very, very critical to the success of the children in that school.
Can I just say something? You said that everyone has been brought along in the process, but that's actually not true. This is going to be a community-funded turnaround, but the community has had three days to look at this information. And I think it's very important that we, we do this right, and we have to make sure that we are transparent in the process. And we do need more time. I need more time. This is what the board knew. The board was, there was a few anecdotal comments in closed session about this, and then we had an email on April 24th that was a proposal from AIR that still posed more questions. And then we received some information on Friday, which was the same time that the public received it. And that gave us the weekend to, to find out information from some of the schools cited as examples. That's what I wanted to look at, were schools that had actually used them and had, you know, some sort of evidence out there. It takes typically around three years from every school that I've researched over the weekend, because that's the information that I had to wait to get until Friday. What we don't know is that this information isn't out there of what the total cost is. The only thing we have to go by is Fort Howard School, which was almost a million dollars. But remember, that's grant money, that's not public money, and this is a big difference here. And we have to make sure that we're doing this right. I can't imagine, anyone in this room doesn't believe that this is necessary, but we have to do this with transparency. This is going to be paid for with community dollars, and so we have to do this with the community. We want them to wrap our arms around them. You say that all the time, but they're not going to do that if we're not transparent. So I'm hoping that we can take a little bit more time to put this out there and get some feedback and let them weigh in because it is, it's their money that we're going to be spending on this. It's not okay to just put this in here and vote on it. I would love to have some sort of a presentation on this. I'm not entirely sure. If someone asked me in the community, what was happening with this, all the details, I really wouldn't have them. If they asked me what this was going to cost, I wouldn't have that, that number. And I think before we spend their money, we need to know these things.
What we're voting on is one year?
We're voting on one year, and so that's the amount that was shared in the proposal on April 24th.
Right.
Which we also announced prior to that with, with our, with our press release. But I understand the, the need to, to focus on what, what will be entailed with this. That is the maximum cost. So that's something that if the needs analysis, and if you as a board and we as an administrative team feels that there are elements that they're offering that don't meet our needs, they are completely willing to be flexible with us on those, those pricing elements. It's important, if, if we don't do the needs analysis before the end of the school year, it won't take place until fall, which will not allow for, for summer planning and aspects of moving the school forward over the summer. So my concern would be, is what, what questions can we answer now?
Right.
It would be of, of help so that the board can move forward, so that we can do our, our needs assessment in timely manner, get the feedback that's needed so that those improvement efforts can be moving forward.
In the proposal that was sent to us, there's a page and it says cost, and it actually states in there that not all costs are included in that price. It says right in there. And so we can't actually say with certainty that that's the price tag. And remember, this isn't our money. We're not a private business. This is community dollars. And so the community, again, needs to be able to, to be aware of this. There's many people out there right now that think this is actually being paid for by grant. There are people out there right now that believe that this is actually, we're hiring a principal with this money. Why do they believe this? Because it hasn't been out there. They got this information on Friday. And I, I just don't believe that that's a very wise way to go about this.
So what questions do you have specifically that we can answer?
That I have?
Yeah. If you, you're saying you don't have enough information. I'm wondering what information is it that you're missing that you'd like John to answer?
How much counseling and mental health assistance, you know, resources will come along with this for that school?
Counseling and mental, go ahead.
I was going to say, I think what's really important is to recognize that this is a multi-pronged approach. This is not one over the other. I think one of the things that we've done over these last several years, and I'm going to ask Vicki to respond to it as well, is that we have put in multiple layers of resource at Washington Middle School, upward of, I believe, 400,000 this last year and, and previous years. The most important is that it's a collective effort on a number of layers. It isn't just one thing. We know that things go hand and glove with engagement of students in the classroom and best practices around education. And talking with Karen Nelson, I think one of the principals who's cited in here in her school, she talked about some of the same issues and concerns that we're facing, and I would offer all schools across the country. So this would not detract or take away from any of those dollars. This is professional learning dollars, and that's a separate.
So I'm going to ask one more time. How much of that 394,000 is actually put into mental health resources?
That's not what it's intended for.
It's not intended to do that.
Other, other funding that has gone into, into mental health resources, and Vicki can attest to that. I think part of the issue is as well, I look at this as something that in, in the medium range and long range will actually end up saving considerable money, because we're spending quite a bit of money right now maintaining the situation and treating symptoms rather than the root causes. And I think that this will allow us to go deeper with the root cause treatment of what needs to change at Washington. So in addition to, and I'm, I'm a huge proponent of mental health and counseling supports, particularly for, for kids coming from, from trauma, those, those are things that we have in place too, that we've, we've added significantly to, and we've all been advocates for. But I look at this as, over time, we will be spending less money on things like monitoring to make sure students are engaged in, in the classrooms and have it, have a payoff and greater dividends of student engagement and student achievement. But Vicki can answer the mental health.
Can I just say something, though?
Yes.
You're hopeful that that's what it'll be. We actually don't have anything in writing from AIR that I've seen that says that that in fact is the case. And I think it's really important, again, when we're spending tax money, we're not using a grant, that we have a little bit more than anecdotal hope.
Sure. Did you have an opportunity to look at the dependencies that are reports from schools that have had turnaround that, that actually outlines things?
Uh, yeah, I did actually, because I got it Friday. So I took some time this afternoon and, over the weekend as well, and it actually gave you the timeline of how long it took to do that. And then I tried to call all the schools, but it's Monday, just to get some feedback from, you know, their experience and maybe to see what they ended up spending as well. Because again, in the proposal, it says this is not the end-all dollar amount. And I think when you have a grant, you have a little bit more flexibility, but again, this is not a grant-funded experience for that school. And I'm, I'm really hopeful that as a board, we recognize that this is a fork in the road. This is one of the most important things we will decide, and we have to do it with transparency. And right now, unless a person is sitting in this audience, because it's 5 o'clock, they're probably working, they're not in this room to hear this. And we need to make sure that we are transparent with, with the community about this. I, I'm frankly surprised that it's on this agenda with referendum bids. This is the first time we've talked about this publicly. Why isn't it in a teaching and learning session where we have time for the public to come and we can ask questions and, and there's more transparency? I don't understand that. I really don't.
So you asked specific questions on mental health support. Vicki, if you want to comment on, on mental supports, mental health supports that we have in place currently and into the future?
We've added extra student services staff, plus we have a team that's collaborating, which I think the group is familiar with, with community organizations to bring mental health services into our schools. Presently, we have six schools that have community providers coming in, and we expect to expand upon that next year with Washington being one of those schools. Great. I've, actually, I just want to make sure people are aware. I've spent probably since I've been appointed, eight hours in that school. I've sat through classrooms, I've walked the hallways, and I was really hoping that this money would be going towards mental health resources, just based on what I've experienced myself.
Well, and I think, is there, you mentioned that there's some, that there's flexibility with how much money we spend. There's also in the proposal that the board will be given reports monthly on the progress that's being made. And I know we've asked for sort of the, the report to include what's coming and, and what has happened so that we have a gauge on, on planned progress and things like that. What, how is it, how will it be, I guess I, is it possible for, as part of those monthly reports, the board to be involved in making the decision of next steps? I mean, is it that flexible that we have the ability to, to say, okay, the needs assessment is done, here are the needs, here's the proposal from AIR to, as to what they propose doing in terms of next steps with professional development, with coaching and all of those kinds of things? For us to then look at that plan at that point and say, you know, we're willing to spend this, this, and this, but we're not sure that we want to move forward with this particular thing and spend that money. So I guess I'm wondering how much flexibility is in the contract for us to make sort of month-to-month decisions like that, or are we committing to some?
We don't have a contract.
That's the next step. But I'm, so I guess my question is, can that be, is that, I don't, can that be built into the, into the contract that we're, I mean, it's, it's, at this point, an understanding from them that they will provide us with flexibility of, of how much money it'll cost?
So as you know, AIR was hired to work with us to hire the turnaround principal. They were very flexible and amenable in negotiating that contract. Dr. Langenfeld and I have had a number of discussions regarding what caveats and provisions we would like to have in the contract regarding reportability to the board, regarding monitoring, accountability by AIR to the district. And certainly, all of those things, Dr. Warren, are provisions we can put in the contract. I can work with you as the board president and Dr. Langenfeld and John and Vicki as to what you would like to see in that contract as we get ready to draft that contract. But we wouldn't enter into a contract until the board has approved that. We've done some preliminary work on just drafting our normal provisions that we would have with any provider, whether it be AIR or West Ed or, or whatever provider you would agree to, but we, that would be putting the cart before the horse before you approve it.
I think they, what you just raised is that makes a good point, and perhaps looking at it a little bit differently. If we can all agree, and I think we would all agree, that we do need to do something, that we do need to turn things around. We've already identified this group as helping us finding a principal. Can we look at them right now strictly for a needs assessment? Because really, that should be done, I think, before anything else happens. And if we did the needs assessment now and then had them come back and say, and in fact, after the needs assessment, they very well come back and say things that aren't in this proposal. They may say you need to increase your student services staff by 50%, that, you know, who knows what they're going to say. But until you do that assessment, until you do that audit, you're not really going to know what it is they should deliver on. So, I mean, I, I know that's altering what's in front of us here, but it, it seems to me that we definitely need a needs assessment, and that should precede anything else. And, you know, we should have an opportunity to examine the data that come out of that needs assessment and yea or nay as far as what the recommendations are.
How much AIR time did the Fort Howard Elementary turnaround, how much was that vetted in public? What, what happened with that as far as presentations, discussions? Was there anything in open session? And that was a grant-funded turnaround, but how much was actually out there prior to voting on a turnaround partner?
You know, the state, what happened was when they were identified as, as a priority school, the state really had some really restricted pieces. They said, you have to extend your school year, you have to extend your school day. And then the other component was you have to select from this group of vendors, one or two or three, and I know Ms. Willams is back there, and she probably recalls, just keep nodding, and if I'm wrong. There were three vendors, and there was discussion then as to which vendor would best meet our needs. I believe that we had a meeting with the vendors. They came and shared, at least with a team, I don't know if there were. At that, at the vendor, do you want to come up so that just?
But how much information was shared publicly? And at what point was it shared publicly? Was it three days before you voted on it, like this?
I don't recall. I think it was just two is one over these three.
So nobody sitting here remembers that, that was there? How much was done prior to voting?
I was a board member at the information meeting of one of, I don't remember who else was there. So I was at that meeting, that was not a public meeting, so I can't remember, I remember being at that meeting, but I can't remember, you know, how it was brought forth for, for voting.
And who else was on the board at the time that was?
I was on the board at the time, and I felt we had enough information to vote and approve the project, and it is.
But that's not the question I'm asking. The question I'm asking is how much public time did that get? How much public AIR time did that get before you voted?
Weren't there, weren't there things, I thought I remember things like even more than one vendor in schools for the public to interact with, right? We got feedback, we got feedback on two vendors, which helped make the recommendation pretty clear. And I'm not, I'm not suggesting we have time for that now, or, or two vendors well-qualified enough to bring them in and do that, because you had to go digging. I'm, I'm not saying that I still, I am supporting some kind of delay or modification to give time for public input. I just don't, I don't know that we have two vendors that are all that competitive, but the public needs to be able to talk about this. But the public needs to be able to talk about this, this plan.
Especially because that was grant-funded. This is not. This is community-funded.
If I could take issue with your comparison of the grant funding versus community funding, this board has to be good stewards of any money that we're spending. And just because some things, a grant, doesn't mean we're cavalier with the money. We're very.
Absolutely not. But it's interesting.
So you're just kind of a little.
No, actually, what's interesting about that point is that you're actually more cavalier with the money that's not a grant, that's not grant-funded. You had more AIR time with money that was grant-funded. And I'm saying, it's interesting that that's actually the case, that we're not giving the public more AIR time with something that's not grant-funded. I don't understand that.
And I guess, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to this issue? I mean, we do have time for public comment.
They're all working, it's five o'clock.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Chris?
Excuse me, I, to me, a needs assessment is sort of automatic, you know, that's part of the process. In terms of getting that done, and we do have to move on, we can't lose another, I won't say we've lost a year, we've made progress, but not nearly what we'd like to see. And I don't want to lose the initiative we have in terms of principle, of working with staff to turn this school around even more. What I understand, the needs assessment can be done yet before school's out. Does that give us enough time to set up programming for staff development, for staff being redundant? Over the summer, or no?
I think it would give enough time. I think that we could come back for a second presentation if we were able to move forward with the needs assessment. I do know that the vendors, as we said, are in very high demand, and so they have contracts locked in other opportunities. And I wouldn't want to pause so long that they decided to go and provide services for somebody else. This, if we think about it in the scope of the district budget, this is a little over one-tenth of one percent of the entire district budget. So it's relatively, in comparison to the entire district budget, it's a, it's a significant purchase, but it's, but it's something that we find is incredibly important for our next move. And I think we've tried some things with changing of leadership, and we've tried some things as far as traditional approaches to change, and we haven't been satisfied with the results. And I feel that we're at a time of, that we can't be taking a half measure with this, that we need to take a full measure and really move forward. It has to be, we told the public in our, in our winter press conference that we needed to be big, bold, and brave, and this is, this is part of that process of moving forward with what Washington needs. And I understand the need to pause if we're going to just move forward with the needs assessment. But I would ask, I would plead that we don't pause too long, because the opportunity will close and we will be six months behind in the fall if we don't move things forward.
John, theoretically, could we run that needs assessment in May, provide some time for community input, review the needs assessment, and make a decision at that point, turn by the end of May, that we could work with this company, or turns out we don't, but assuming we are. Does that give us enough time?
I think it would be challenging for us to turn around a needs assessment and present the needs assessment to the board prior to the next board meeting. I think that, so if it was a May timeline, it might be possible to do it for the first meeting in June, but that would be as soon as I could see it turning.
Do you think, excuse me, with that timeline, it would be okay for the company to work with the company here and providing, I'm guessing they're going to lose the time to you?
We have no idea if this will be even acceptable. We've not had this conversation of just pulling one item out of their proposal and saying we would do this. So we would have to follow up with them tomorrow and to see if this would even be acceptable to them.
But if we go back to the discussion where there is some flexibility within the contract, so that things could be modified, and did I hear you also say that there's going to be more regular updates on this process at our board meetings, and we can invite public input at that time, so there would be monthly opportunity for public input?
Absolutely.
And things could be modified? As, I don't want us to do something to jeopardize our ability to be served by this company. I can appreciate the need for more public input, but if we could get it as an ongoing process with the ability to modify as we.
You know, how much ability to modify are you really going to get? They're going to want some guaranteed money in this. I would, I mean, any, any profit or nonprofit needs some, I would think we need some guaranteed money.
I agree, and I would say, quite honestly, my, one of my concerns is that we have to get to a point where we can trust the process to a large degree. There are going to be some changes that probably won't be in the moment incredibly popular from, if, when people ask adults to change adult action, it's not an easy process. And if we go base just on opinion of the moment, on whether or not we're going to continue with something, that would be a dangerous road to take, because we would not be really fully committing. So I think that we need to commit to the efforts that are needed, but in a very careful way, where if things were becoming too costly, or if they were offering something that didn't meet our needs, that we were able to scale back. But not to the point of having each step micromanaged by.
No, and I'm not suggesting we take a straw poll every time people speak.
But, but in our conversations with AIR, one of the pieces, and I have it in writing, is that we can scale based on the needs assessment to Mr. Dorff's, you know, assessment, that if we, if we do the needs assessment, we would have a much clearer picture of need, and it could look different than what originally they had anticipated. And I found that in conversations and reading through the proposal, that has occurred. And repeatedly, they talk about their flexibility and wanting to customize the work. And I think that that's, that's an important part of this as well.
I want to ask a question. John, can you talk a little bit about the opportunity that we'll have to replicate this in other schools in our district, which, to my way of thinking, takes that initial ramping up cost, which is substantial, and can possibly spread that over a number of years in a number of schools? And so that, that number suddenly becomes much easier to deal with.
Maybe, do we think of the 4K through 12th grade experience that a student has, it's kind of like a river with the elementary schools being tributaries flowing into middle school and onto the high school? The middle school is the section upon which we're going to be focusing at this point with our, with our support work. But there are challenges that are being faced, mental health challenges, academic challenges, engagement challenges that are faced in many of the feeder elementaries that feed into Washington, and some things that continue into East as well, that we want to make sure that we're able to focus on supporting those schools as well. Looking at HOW, looking at Nicolay, looking at a wide variety of schools that we serve that could benefit from this. I look at, I've worked as a school principal and had some experience in turning that school, but it was over a slow process. It was over a time of five years really that it took. And that's, that's the standard. This is, this is an opportunity to learn how to do it a little more quickly, so that the school, the students coming in, the students coming in receive those supports now. Because a kindergartner who's coming in this year, they don't have five to seven years to wait. So I look at it as an opportunity to enhance my skills as a leader of principal supervisors, and for my principal supervisors to enhance their skills. But most importantly, what is it that the principals and leadership teams of each building are going to gain from this? They've volunteered and they're interested in helping support that, so that we can all expand our capacity to serve.
I just want to make clear though, that, so the public knows that when we make this initial investment, and we purchase this program, so to speak, and these supports, that we won't have to pay that again when we, if we want to utilize this in other schools in our district.
Right, right.
It's, it's something that we can, you know, spread across the district without having to pay additional money.
If that's the case, though, then the Fort Howard Elementary School turnaround, which is ending this year, why isn't that something that we can use to go into other schools with? I'm not sure why we would have to do this over. Because I'm assuming that we've learned a few things through that process.
We certainly have. We've learned quite a few things from that process. But I think that the, the focus of how this, this professional development opportunity is put together for us, it's not the state coming in and wanting to turn the school, it's us choosing to work with a partnership in turning not only Washington, but multiple schools. So that's really the difference in my mind, is it's going to be, we have learned many things from Washington. We've learned about the importance, and there are many things that we're doing at, I'm sorry, from Fort Howard. There are many things that we're doing at Washington now that are direct benefit of what we did at Fort Howard. We learned that, just as a, for instance, that sometimes if staff have been in a building for a long time under change of many, many leaders, that we need to offer opportunity for people to potentially transition to other schools. That's something we did. We've learned that there are important aspects of coaching related to instructional coaching and behavioral coaching. Those were elements that we fed in. Also, the use of data, and data walls, and what are we doing to make sure that we're analyzing individual student needs and individual classroom needs, rather than looking at broad swath school report cards. Those were all critical lessons that we learned, not from actively, deeply engaging, because that wasn't the way that the model was set, but from, from looking at it from a side. So that really, if anything, whets our appetite for knowing that that is going to be really beneficial for the system as a whole. That it's going to allow me to be a better leader of the leaders and allow us to move forward in a positive way.
Well, being in the building quite a bit in the last, you know, seven months, to me, the needs are smaller class sizes and mental health resources. What if that's what they end up telling you, and then we don't have any money for that?
So, the, we have put in over a million dollars in the past two years in extra resources related to monitors, mental health supports, additional supervision.
Teachers.
Teachers, an extra associate principal. We're in, in some respects, we're treating, treating the symptoms with many, many resources without getting to the root cause of the issue. And really, we could continue down that route. But I think it's important for us to really go deep with the problem analysis, because if we don't do that well, we're going to be spending more community money and more grant money on things that are treating the symptoms of the circumstance rather than the deeper root cause. I, I join you in wanting to make sure that this throughout the year is as open as possible. I think it's going, I think having it as open as possible is not only going to be good for the public, but it's going to be good for us, for being able to have that dialogue around things that matter most.
But we've already started out of the gates with giving them three days to absorb this. We haven't even involved them from the beginning.
I think that there are things that we could have done differently. But we were also under, under a situation where we were also trying to find multiple vendors, and we were asking, asking multiple questions where they went back to get additional information, because we wanted to make sure whoever we brought forward was going to be flexible with us and was going to meet our needs. I think one of the other positive aspects of AIR is their partnership with the state. They're really moving in, they want to make a good impression here in Wisconsin. They've done tremendous work in East St. Louis, and Buffalo, New York, and New York City, and a variety of other places that we've contacted people and done research on how they've performed. They're partnering with the state now with the Wallace Foundation, and I believe that they're putting their absolute best foot forward, with their best staff forward, to create the most positive experience for us. Because they're going to want to use this as a capstone for other, other states.
I have a question then. Why were all the examples that were given to us grant-funded turnarounds? Because if, I mean, not, not saying their work isn't worthy, but the difference is, we are paying for this. It's not grant-funded. And that is the difference between what was given to us as an example and, you know, what's in front of us right now. That's a big difference to the community.
Federal grant money is taxpayer money, to some degree the same as our community funds are as well.
Sure it is, but at the same time, I was in a classroom that had 26 kids in a kindergarten class, and the teacher isn't, doesn't have support all the time. I'm sure she would love to have some of that money to be put into her classroom. We have needs right now.
So we could probably divide the amount that we spend on this and add an hour of paraprofessional time to each of our schools, if we, if we allocated it based on dividing it into paraprofessional time, or half an hour of teacher time for each of our schools per week. But if we think about it in the scope of the district budget, it's, it's around a tenth of one percent of the budget. It is significant. But I truly believe, the board is holding me responsible and the rest of the team responsible to have change at Washington. And this is something that I believe is truly important for that change. I agree on the transparency.
We need to come back to that, and I don't, I don't, I don't disagree with the need to reduce class sizes, to increase the amount of student services support. Those are absolute critical needs. But this is the result of board direction to do something about Washington.
Yes.
And, and we were adamant about that, and have been for going on a year now. Couple of questions. Would two weeks and around, you know, to your, to your points as far as AIR time, would another two weeks give adequate time for people to digest and be able to prepare to come to the regular board meeting and, and address concerns they have? And if so, does AIR have a calendar as far as when they're ready to put boots on the ground? And how much would it impact that particular calendar if we put it off for two weeks, assuming, and that's only assuming that after giving it a public review and hearing about it, that we voted on it affirmatively in two weeks?
I would ask that we at least have the opportunity to move forward with the needs analysis, because a needs analysis, and I think that's what you're.
Well, that'd be my preference personally, yeah, if we can separate that out.
A needs analysis done the last week of school won't really give a true picture of, I, we want high-quality instruction until the last minute. But if we're, if we're observing classrooms on the last two days of school or something like that, I don't think we'll have a, have a true perspective for the needs analysis portion. So I think that there are things we could do to share more, more of the proposal and what we've done in that two-week period, if AIR can be flexible. And I think that it's, it's important conversation. You're right, Ms. Nacow, that it's important that we all understand that this is something we all have to get behind and back 110 percent. And, because it is important.
But now, we're not sure that we can actually split it up, though, right? You said that?
Yeah, and I think that the most important thing is to, we can make a call tomorrow. I think that the piece that I would offer is that, I don't know about the timeline either. I think we just have to ask that question. Again, depending upon what their capacity is. You know, I think that they could possibly do, and the piece, the piece that's difficult is to, is the board willing to contract for some services? And in the event that we don't follow through, you know, I think that that's the, the piece that I think they would find challenging. We could send them data, they could come in, you know, they could start a data analysis at this point in time and look at survey data and look at our data, and expedite that process. It's a question of whether or not, it's a four-person team that comes in to do the work, because they are doing observations in classrooms and they are doing interviews and those kinds of things. So, you know, to gather people and bring them in in short order may well be possible. We just have not asked that.
Andrew?
So, if, from, and my, you know, my concerns here are from a really more of the technical perspective of making sure that people feel, people feel they have a chance to be heard, that people have a chance to be heard. Teachers from, teachers from Washington have a, have a chance to be heard. Is it likely that, is it likely that something new will come up in the next two weeks that will make me feel differently about the, what I've heard and my own research on AIR, especially given that we didn't have a really heated competition between bidders? Probably not. But I think the, the public has a right to do that, and I, you can't start this process off, I don't want to start this, I don't want to start this process off with a, with a question mark. And that's, that's my concern here. I think we need to do the turnaround partner. So just keep, I, so I don't, I don't have a lot of emotion about this or anything, I just think it's the right thing to do, even though I think it's very like. I just think it's the right thing to do, even though I think it's very likely that that AIR has the, has the winning proposal and is the right one to go with. I think it's, I think it's valid to learn a bit more about what ongoing costs schools have tended to have because realistically, there's really not much chance we would do a, decide to stop after year one. Chances are, we're going to see it through, is that, you know, should there be a, should there be a budget guideline for future years, which the board could amend, but at least we're saying now, this is what we're looking at? All things that we're not ready for tonight. And I guess my question would be this. Say it passed tonight, it would take a while for there to be people in the classrooms. It wouldn't be tomorrow, it wouldn't be this week, I mean, right? It'd be very, maybe, maybe best-case scenario, as Melissa would be negotiating the contract, but I can't imagine it being before late next week, could it?
To finalize the contract.
To have, to have, to have boots on the ground from AIR in Green Bay in a building. There's no way that would happen this week. There's no way that that would happen in a week if they, if they signed the contract exactly the way we wanted it, I, there still wouldn't be anyone here Friday.
I doubt it, but I know that they are pre-planning in case that things are approved so that they'll be ready. They've asked for copies of the schedule and they're, I've done preliminary work with the staff at Washington talking about, because they, we're bringing the staff at Washington along with this as well. I spent time, an hour with them this afternoon as well during their staff meeting, sharing where we were in the principal hiring process that we've worked with on AIR and also sharing what would the success partnership look like with AIR if the board is approving, just so, because they need to know if they're, if they're having people in their classrooms in a couple of weeks, they need to know what it's about. And I feel that the, the teachers at Washington feel strongly about this as well, that they, we've communicated this to them multiple times and they want this as a support and they know that this is, that they're committing to a deeper change process rather than super, you know, more superficial treatments that we've done in the past. And so I want us to make sure that our commitment to them is honored as well, that they're feeling that this is something that we're committing to fully.
I have to be honest though about that because I'm sorry, that's actually not entirely true. There are teachers there who want mental health resources and smaller class sizes. This is not what they want. And I've talked to them a lot.
Yeah, I, I don't think, I don't think this, I don't think this money, especially because it's not, I mean, if you, now, if we were to say, if we were to say an, we're going to take an ongoing 394 and add it year over year to mental health resources and smaller class size in a specific place, then you're getting a little something, but not a lot. It's six FDs with, no, it's not even six, it's with benefits, four.
Three, four, yeah.
And I'm not, and I'm not saying we shouldn't add to, I mean, I think the presentation we're going to hear later, I think the community is very clear about having more with mental health supports and I think it's going to cost more than the 394, but I guess my point with when they would get started is, I don't think we're looking at really losing two weeks of AIR being here in the buildings. I think if we delay two weeks, we're probably, we're probably only losing one because they're not going to come here tomorrow anyways, even if we sign the contract the way they want.
We lose two weeks no matter what.
We lose two weeks.
The contract negotiation doesn't start till we vote to approve the contract and that's in two weeks.
Well, how do we know what we're approving?
I, I can't start negotiating, I don't have authority from the board to draft a contract or negotiate a contract until you've approved the expenditure and to enter into a contract with the company. So we would not be able to move forward until the vote is done.
No, but they could. They could make, they could make a business decision to be ready, be ready to go knowing that a vote was delayed for two weeks.
But they still haven't negotiated a contract.
Still have to negotiate the contract.
I have a question. Is there any reason, I mean, they know that this is not a grant-funded turnaround. Why aren't they here presenting to us? I don't understand that. They know that this is not going to be paid for with grant money. Why wouldn't they have come and presented to us?
I think if I could offer, one of the things that, that we had not anticipated, the questions from board members came this weekend. I think that the piece and the board was apprised of and we had ongoing conversations. I would offer that I didn't recognize that there was going to be great concern around public dialogue.
We actually didn't have ongoing conversations. We had some anecdotal comments during closed session that, you know, they seemed like this is what we should look into fine. And then we had an email and it was a proposal on the 24th of April. That was it. On Friday, we received some more information that actually cited some examples of schools. Either there have been conversations that I haven't been privy to or they haven't happened.
So the-
That's not, that's just disingenuous.
So the, the information on what we plan to do was shared with the public in February and we've shared a, an extensive proposal two weeks ago with information in an appendix with many, many examples of turnaround partnership in other, in other districts. So that was, that was in your hands two weeks ago as a board. I'm not sure what happened between Friday and today that raised additional questions other than some of the social media pieces, but I think that the, that we've been clear around what we plan to do, what we want to do and what we need to do for Washington. And I want, I hope that we're part of a district that can have the courage to do what needs to be done.
It was mentioned during a press conference that you were looking to doing it. That was it. Nobody knew that it wasn't going to be a grant-funded turnaround. Nobody had a name. We didn't know anything until a few weeks ago about it. The proposal that you shared doesn't actually, didn't give the information that we were given on Friday about examples of exactly how it changed the school and in what areas. That was not given to us. That's not in their proposal. That, I mean, if that's their proposal, and so that wasn't something that we were given. And the reason why the questions came because then you were, it was, it was evident that it was a three-year experience to see significant change and that wasn't, that was not, I looked over it 14 times, the proposal. It wasn't stated in there that that's what it was, was a three-year process. It was clear on Friday when that was sent to us that that's what it was, but that's not what we got on the 24th. We got this on Friday.
What, so what are you saying was not shared on the 24th?
The proposal that came, that was confidential, came through email, didn't actually have what was given to us on Friday where examples, I'm hoping everyone read it, where he actually showed the areas that these schools, you know, where they actually saw the change. And then it said how long that it actually took and it was an average of three years for that change. That was not included in their proposal that was on the 24th. Other than that, that is it. We haven't talked about this. It was mentioned at a, at a press conference, but again, the average person thinks that this is not coming out of, they think it's, you know, that it, that the school was designated from DPI as a priority school and this is the reason that we're doing it because they're comparing it to Fort Howard. That's what they know about.
Well, I would say that the board and the community have identified that Washington is in need of significant support and improvement and I, I hope that that's eventually what we're able to do. And I leave it to the board to make the decisions on, from a governance perspective or we do on what is the best course of action to do so.
And I, and I can appreciate that, but I think it's really important that we are transparent in the process. And we gave the public three days to look at a little bit of material over a weekend. That was it. That's not good governance.
If I may, you know, I appreciate what you're saying and I should, my comments are not cavalier. With, you, you need authority from us so you can go ahead and start negotiating a contract. In that contract, can you not have discussion that we still need, that the board would like more input from the community, which they have not received to the degree that they might like at this point in time? But some, some way to move on with it. I mean, my concern right now, I can complain, quite frankly, that, you know, it shouldn't have been out there beforehand, but I feel like I'm up against, be a good or bad a wall here. I wouldn't see something happen to Washington. We've talked about it for a while. I know we've talked about making a turnaround school, going to outside groups to do that. We, we just got to get off the dime with it. I mean, I, I can't cease stalling it and, you know, learn from this and next time around, maybe as the superintendent administration build in more lead time to have, have more information provided to us. You like a little bit more detail perhaps than I do, which is fine.
No, I would just like the public to know about it.
More contact from the public. I mean, you know, there's a point in time where I've got to make a decision. I was, I was employed via election to be here and take the information I have at a point in time, the best information I have, and go on from it. I can always say, I would like more information. I'd like more information. To me, the key thing right now is to move on and get Washington taking up another notch or two from where it has been this year. We all know it needs it. The community knows it needs it. Teachers know it needs it. And it's not an either-or situation about getting mental health or doing this. I never want to be in that position.
Okay, this, I need to know more about this contract negotiating because, I mean, okay, let's say, let's, let's just say we, there has to be some, do we have a, do we have a final vote on the contract itself? I mean, what, because what's to say that, I mean, I'm, I know you, this is theoretical because you negotiate, you've negotiated very good provisions and contracts for us consistently, some, sometimes to the point of writing them for a vendor and telling them to sign it and they do, so that's appreciated. What's, but what's to say that, like, is that it then? We say approve the contract for $394,000 and that, so that's it then? We're pre-approving whatever's in the contract and the only mechanism left would be for the board to order the administration not to sign it or some quirky thing like that?
Linda, could you read the motion again, please?
Yeah, Michelle. Lead turnaround partner at Washington Middle School. I made a motion that American Institute for Research, AIR, be contracted to serve as the lead turnaround partner at Washington Middle School at a cost of $394,000 as presented through.
So the motion is to give us the authority to enter into the contract with AIR. We have not historically brought contracts back to the school board for approval. Before I got here, the understanding was the board had delegated that authority to the superintendent to enter into contracts. Our purchasing policy requires us to bring the RFPs forward for you to approve the RFPs and then the administration has negotiated and entered into contracts. But again, I've heard several provisions that you would like to include in those contracts. We can most certainly work with, and I have worked with Dr. Langenfeld already, to identify some special needs that we don't typically include in those contracts. Thank you for the compliments on the drafting. I can also work with Dr. Warren as the board president and get some more feedback based on tonight's discussion as well.
Yeah, but, I, so I might have been mistaken as to how far down the road contract negotiations are when we, when we finalize funding. I guess I thought they were pretty near, pretty near the signature and just need to know that the money's there and they're, okay, so it's not-
But I would offer this, Andrew. We do have, the RFP that we issued has a number of contract terms already in it and working with our new purchasing director, we've been very clear in the RFPs that those particular standard terms for the contract are the standard terms that will be included in the contract unless the vendor in their application objects to what we've included in the RFP. And my understanding is that AIR had not objected to those standard terms. But those things that we put in the RFP, of course, are not going to encompass the full scope of contract negotiations and that is what we start after the board has approved and given us the authority to enter into a contract.
So, can we legally authorize you to start working on a contract in anticipation of a final vote on May 21st?
I don't know what I, I don't know what I'm entering into or negotiating because you haven't given that full authority. My concern would be that it's bad faith negotiations to enter into negotiations with a vendor who has not, who I don't have any approval to contract with.
It also places the needs assessment two weeks out at a time of the school year.
And essentially in the fall.
Or someone could, or someone could, a group that's, an organization that's going to earn a, very, very likely to earn a large contract into a new state that they're looking to gain experience in, maybe they just make a business decision to advance, if you will, some, some work while the, knowing that the vote is going to be in.
I don't know if they do that without a contract.
That's making the assumption that we are in fact going to vote for it. If you're suggesting to a company, come on in and do the work and, and we're going to vote for it in two weeks and you'll be able to come in, that's, that just seems kind of underhanded to me.
Can I offer, what I, what I've heard is that there's support for the needs assessment, but there's wanting for public input. So could you, could the contract, and we could draft it that, we conduct the needs assessment, we would pay for that needs assessment, I'm not sure what the cost is of that, but we could bifurcate the contract that prior to any work then being conducted on what they identify as a needs assessment, would that, there would be a public input session?
Well, that was my suggestion 45 minutes ago.
But is that-
I'm adding the piece of the public input session. So it would not be two different contracts. We would have the, you would approve the $394,000, but prior to spending any more money beyond what it's going to cost for the needs assessment, and they have not identified exactly what that cost was, was that there would be a public input session based on what that needs assessment showed. And then the plan would be developed from there with public input.
But then we couldn't, but then we couldn't exit. We'd be committed to the full 394.
What if it read up to 390, 394,000? To give us-
Right.
-a maximum, but not commit us to that full amount-
Right.
-to allow for that flexibility.
Yep.
Are they going to agree to that?
I don't, I don't think that will be a problem at all in terms of just the up to, but I, I don't know if they would be responsive to just doing the needs assessment without knowing next steps.
I mean, the up to speaks to their willingness to be flexible, as you've told us.
Yeah.
I just don't feel comfortable, okay, come on in, do the needs assessment and then we'll talk about it some more and then maybe, I'm afraid we're going to lose our, our place with them.
Yes.
That's my concern too.
And I, I don't want to take that chance.
I'm concerned.
They are, they are considered to be the premier turnaround partner to work with in the country and it was challenging for us to a degree to, to get the best of the best and have them lined up for us. If, if we're not able to commit, there may be concern around, should they commit to somebody else who is willing to work with them?
See, I never, I never pictured this not, I was, I was so surprised that this, I mean, in my mind, I knew where things were coming and if I was told this and didn't react, then I screwed up, but I just assumed large new initiative, work session, two weeks, regular, regular meeting, the usual, the usual way we, we do things. And I understand, I see where there might be some problems with the, with the two weeks, but when, you know, I, I heard some, you know, some comments, I was like, but there's not a lot to worry about here because that's exactly why we built the, the two-week cycle, except for, where it's not, it's not on it.
Except we got caught up in the delay in the RFP and we're also caught by the, the near end of the school year. So that's what has prompted the faster action on this.
I think if I could offer this, I think the next step would be to go and have that conversation with them tomorrow. To, to the point being made, to your, your point, Ms. Sitnikow, and to yours, Mr. Becker, yes- yes, typically this would need a two-week turnaround. That's the very typical piece, and I agree with that. I also was referencing the fact that we've had conversation. We've not had this publicly, and you're absolutely accurate with that. I think that the piece that would be helpful and perhaps could have addressed this misstep, if it is a misstep of not bringing AIR in, would have been some feedback that had that concern brought to my attention. It, to be perfectly honest, we are in a time crunch, and it just seemed very logical. We had the resources to do it. It seemed logical. To your point, I certainly can appreciate and understand that. But I also recognize that I would appreciate next time that if there are things that concern you, that we need to have it in a different time place, that we address it sooner than later as well, so that we can get on top of it and be more responsive.
What really concerns me is that the public had three days to think about and absorb that this was happening. That's the biggest concern.
All right, so let's make a decision. We could talk about this for another hour.
Can I move to amend the motion?
Yes.
I move to amend the motion to read at a cost of up to $394,000.
Second.
I'll vote yes on the amendment, but I am, I'm gonna have another, an additional amendment. Probably, but it's not a second degree amendment, so I'm okay with this one.
All right, so we have an amended motion on the floor. We're just voting to amend the motion, not voting for the motion itself. So, Linda?
Maloney?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
George? Hi.
Sitnikow?
No.
Hi.
McCoy?
Hi.
Wagner?
Carried six, one. And then you have another amendment?
Well, I'm trying to, yeah, I'm just trying to, just trying to formulate it. I mean, what, is there something you can, given that the needs assessment is not the, obviously, it's not gonna be a majority of the cost of the contract, it's gonna be a, can you give something that you think would be a worst-case scenario for a needs assessment so we could approve that?
I think it would probably be below the threshold of what the board would normally need to approve. I think it would be below 100,000 for the needs assessment. But I think it's still important that we have the symbolic gesture of support on that.
It's broken off.
We can look at the amount, and perhaps, I can't speak for the individuals involved, but perhaps the needs assessment could be arranged so that it might coincide and overlap with our next board meeting, and that we might have opportunity for them here presenting themselves. Because I think that this is something, it is something new for us, it's something we need, but they can speak to the results and what it looks like for the public and for the board far better than us who are moving into this as an important next step, but something that is not the center of our wheelhouse.
But we don't know that they'll come.
We know that they will come for the needs assessment. We don't know that there'll be an exact coinciding with those dates. I'm just thinking hypothetically, they may have committed to other schools and other districts on the date of our next board meeting, but we can see what we can do.
But I guess what I mean, we don't know if they'll come to the meeting. We know they'll come to the school, we don't know if they'll come to the meeting.
Yep.
That meeting, I have no doubt they would come to a meeting.
Right.
It just depends on your schedule.
That's true, too. We could potentially have a special board meeting in a different date that would allow us to meet with them. I do think, I do appreciate the balancing of wanting to make sure things are transparent for the public with the need to move forward in a quick manner to support Washington, so thank you.
So what could a motion look like to do what Ed was suggesting? What would that, I'm just trying to wrap my head around what that would even be if we divided it, or if we?
I'm thinking out loud. If the motion read expenditure up to $394,000 to include an initial needs assessment with expenditures beyond the needs assessment to come after public input, following the needs assessment, something to that effect.
And then, and then we could?
And would you need that to be in a motion, or would you just make that as part of the contract?
I don't think, I think it's enough that it's in the minutes and that is what the board's direction is. That's pretty specific for a motion. We haven't gotten that specific before, but.
So then there would be an understanding that there'd be no expenditures beyond the needs assessment. And we wouldn't be committing anything before the needs assessment were done. And in the event, unlikely though it is, that we got feedback, or we felt it was terrible, or some people in the public had problems with it, and it was investigated and we didn't like it, that would give us a chance to?
A right to terminate the contract?
Yeah.
But so was up to $394,000.
Correct.
That being said.
But up to $394, there's still, that means, that's different because you're negotiating, you would negotiate a package and you end up at, you know, probably close to 394, because that was in their RFP, so that's probably where it ends up. And now the whole 394 is going there. So this, this seems like it would add some kind of a, some kind of a breakpoint. I want there, the public, there has to be some meaning to the public's ability to provide input here and not provide, providing input in two weeks on something that's a completely done deal and the money is guaranteed to be expended is not, not that.
Up to does not guarantee the expenditure of $394,000.
No, but it does once the contract is signed for $394,000.
No, because it's signed for up to.
Okay.
And that being said, I'm gonna call the question. I'm sorry.
We have, that requires a two-thirds vote to end debate.
Okay.
All right, we'll vote, and we're voting on ending debates. If you wanna end debate, vote yes. Linda?
McCoy?
Yes.
George?
No.
Becker?
No.
Warren?
Yes.
Maloney?
Yes.
Sitnikow?
No.
Wagner?
Yes.
One, two, three, four?
Bill.
All right.
Okay, so.
So we've given you guidance to do what you said you were gonna do, which is?
The contract, based on your discussion, the contract would be structured spending up to $394,000. And this is, of course, if they agree to this.
And we realize that, you know, that, I mean, that is an if, and there is that risk that they might just walk away from it.
That they would conduct a needs assessment, following the needs assessment would be an opportunity for public input. And after the public input was done, of course, you have asked already for monthly updates, so there would be monthly updates. And then we would move on to the next phase, and the next phase would be the expenditures up to the $394,000 with language that would allow for termination following public input.
Although, I mean, we technically could vote in two weeks. The needs assessment won't be done at that point.
Right.
But I'm not gonna be able to, I can't start negotiating that contract until you've given me authority to do so.
So it won't be started.
So I will not start that contract until you?
Right.
Well, here's the thing.
Right, but it's.
If we vote the way it is right now, and we authorize the needs assessment, there is still two weeks for us to examine it further, for the public to ask questions, examine it further. And it may be that during that intervening period of time, everybody's satisfied with what they're saying that they have to offer. They know what they're doing, they've done it before. I'm satisfied with what they have to offer. What I would hope would come out of that needs assessment, perhaps, is that maybe some of the things that they say they are going to offer aren't needed. Maybe there are other things that come up, and we would find that out. And that the eventual, you know, 394 is going to include things that maybe aren't in there right now, that we haven't thought about. But still, we've got the intervening two weeks to look at their basic product and say, okay, you know, that looks good, and we understand that your needs assessment may uncover other things that aren't in there that we have to really address with a lot of diligence.
But the money is spent then. I mean, the money, generally speaking, when you sign on the dotted line, at that point, the parties know who's giving what money, or no? I mean.
Well, it's how you structure the contract and what you're paying for. I need to talk to John as to what, John Kasha, as to what needs to be expended before the end of this fiscal year, based on the money that's available in the budget.
Which that, that's a wrinkle that changes things. If there's money that needs to be expended towards it this year.
We have the funding to pay for it.
Then we could.
If we don't pay for it this year, it will impact other potential expenditures in the coming year.
Tom, you mean the whole thing?
Potentially. I mean, I'm just saying we have the money to pay for as much as we can accomplish this year now. So if we were able to, maybe if we're able to approve expenditures through the end of June 30th so that it includes the needs assessment and preliminary planning, that would take care of a larger portion of the budget that we have to expend. It would not, it would not impact a greater long-term contract if we want more light on that as far as public reporting. And it would allow them to do any of the work that they needed with staff and with the hired administration as well. Because we will be quite likely at the end of this week, early next week, finishing our hiring and preparing a preparation for bringing forward a principal to the board as well. We would like them to be able to work with that principal as early as possible and as intensively as possible. So if we were able to secure funding through the end of this fiscal year, that would be something that would allow for needs assessment and some preliminary planning. So it'd be to a degree an opportunity for us to allow for greater contract negotiation and work, for the public to have the transparency, for us to have the needs assessment, and for Washington to have that pre-work done that would be important. And quite possibly, it might come under the amount that would meet the threshold for the board anyway. I'm not sure what the amount would be at this point, because I'm guessing the needs assessment might be $50,000. So I'm not, I don't think they would meet the $100,000 threshold anyway between now and the end of June, but it would allow us to have that flexibility to not lose time and have public commentary.
So they didn't give you any sort of itemized list of what everything costs?
It's in here, but I didn't know that we'd be breaking it. I didn't know that we'd be considering breaking it into end of June. But I think that that would be kind of an interesting possibility as far as the board to examine, as far as possibility that would not hinder us in any way. It would allow us to move forward, and it would allow us to consider more publicly before making it a deeper, long-term investment.
So the needs assessment's in there as a line item?
I believe it is.
I think so, too. I just have to take a, it's a pretty extensive document.
Yeah, it's in appendix M.
John, are you able to tell us what's the amount that would be left that could apply to this? Do you have that available? Is it in, I mean, is there a line that is down to X amount of dollars as of today, and we don't have other spending for it?
Well, the April month, the April month's final statement is done, so the analysis is over for April. We have two more fiscal years to go, three months. It certainly appears we would have enough to fund this and the project later coming here today.
When you say to fund this, are you talking about the full 394?
I don't think the entire process is done by June 30th.
Okay.
So I'm not assuming.
Can't pay for it, though.
So how much are you assuming?
For planning purposes, I'm assuming half.
Okay.
So the needs assessment, the comprehensive diagnostic needs assessment action planning is $56,892. Then there's breakdown for school leadership, professional development, and coaching. So I would imagine that that would be a portion that would be utilized in June. The large portion is on instructional coaching and support as well as professional development. My thoughts are that it's likely that that would be continuing more in August than it would be in June. So it would be really looking at the expenditures of the leadership, school leadership, professional development, coaching of $109,024, as well as the comprehensive diagnostic needs assessment and action planning for five, or I'm sorry, for $56,892.
What was the other one?
The other one was school leadership, professional development, and coaching.
And that was how much?
That was $109,024.
Sweet. That much in such a short time?
I don't think that it would be fully utilized in June, but I would imagine that that would be a portion of. So I would imagine that they would be using the comprehensive diagnostic needs assessment of 56,000, 57,000 basically. And I would imagine that they'd be using a portion of the school leadership coaching aspect as well. I don't believe that they'd be using the full amount because they would be, I would imagine they will want to front loan, but they will not be doing it all in June.
There's 36 days of coaching for leadership, so we want.
So I would say that they would probably come in for a few days in June in addition to the needs assessment.
But the needs assessment is 56,000. Do you need board approval for that?
We wouldn't need board approval, technically.
Except they're not necessarily gonna buy into doing the needs assessment if they have no commitment to any other contract after that. Because they're not a needs assessment company, they're a turnaround partner, so.
So basically, everything we just discussed is kind of, I mean, you talked about doing the needs assessment first and then?
Right, I mean, we've discussed the fact that they may not agree to this idea that we have and decide to go elsewhere.
So what would we be voting on tonight, then?
Well, the current motion on the floor is to go approve, or?
The cost of up to $394,000.
Cost of up to $394,000 and have Melissa draft that contract. But in the contract is this caveat of do the needs assessment, have public input, you know, move forward, decide if we're gonna spend any more money, and they may say, no, we're not doing that. We're not just gonna come in and have a needs assessment and then have you tell us, you know, that we don't want their services.
But after public input, can we say on our end, no, we're not interested?
Well, that's why they wouldn't maybe agree to this contract. That's what, right? That's what, yeah. Yes, we can, but that's the, but that's the.
They may not accept the contract.
They may not accept the contract, yeah.
I have not had any experience in the board terminating contracts. Administration has terminated contracts. You could direct administration to terminate the contract. The school board has not terminated contracts.
I think you have to ask yourself, why would a company come to our city and do this work with such a recalcitrant group of people? I mean, I think if I was a company, I would look hard at that and go, hmm, I don't know.
I'm gonna move to amend the motion to add that no more than $100,000 be expended prior to June 30, 2018, without additional board approval. So that's the amendment. Unless no one takes consent, then I guess it's not. Now I have to vote no on the whole thing, I guess.
If I may, we go into contract with many companies for construction and other things. And once you go into it, you sort of have the general plan of what's going to be done. You can never put everything down there and dot every i and cross every t. You have to have flexibility as you go when things come up that you missed. Now, to me, one of them that was missed is having more community input. We can. We can still get that. They have enough flexibility as a company working with it. If that's what we want, they'll, they'll do it. But again, I'm going to go back to, well, before I go back to that, Ms. McCoy's comment about if I were a business out there seeing some of this, would I, would I want to continue to work here on that limited basis or, you know, keep my people working someplace else? Quite frankly, if I were applying for principalship at Washington and I saw that the board can't make some sort of commitment at this point in time when you say you want to turn around this school, I'd start, I'd be questioning that too. Would I have the backing I need to truly turn around that school? So, I mean, that, that said, I just feel we have to get off the dime and make a decision and move on.
Yeah, I, I agree, and I would like to be able to have that, that opportunity for public comment and input, you know, follow, you know, consistent with whatever's on that, on that needs assessment certainly, and the ability to adjust as we move forward. But some things were very, very clear. There is an expectation from the families, the students, the community, that we do something about Washington. It was clear last year, we did things, we put in more of the same, and that didn't work. We did have, as was mentioned, a press conference where we did talk about bringing in a turnaround partner. And, you know, the thing about, I, I am troubled with the notion about three years. That's not acceptable. We need to see improvement, you know, tomorrow. I mean, you know, my corny phrase that I borrowed from the fellow in Louisiana, you know, people are looking at their calendar, we're looking at our watch. We, we need to see this happen, and that's not acceptable. But we were voted in to make some decisions, and it's unfortunate that the timing on this was what it was. But I agree, we, we need to get off the dime and move forward on it. It's clear that, if nothing else is abundantly clear, it's that there is the demand that we, we do something about Washington. And this is the path that we had set back in February, whenever that news conference was, that we were bringing in a turnaround partner. I trust that the due diligence was done by administration in terms of looking at the available partners out there. And, you know, again, let's move forward.
It's not a notion, though, I have to say this. It's not a notion. It's actually Morton East High School, three years, Blim High School, three years, East St. Louis High, three years, Martin Luther King Jr., three years, Norfolk Public Virginia, Public Schools in New Virginia, three years. It's not a notion. It's actually what AIR seems to take to turn a school around. So I just want to make sure that that's clear to the public, that's actually what they stated does. That's how long it takes them to do that.
But was there progress? Was it incremental progress?
Yeah, it actually shows.
And that's what I'd be looking for.
Yep.
I'm not saying it's going to be 100% turnaround in a year. But I would expect to see dramatic incremental progress.
But that's not what they show. What they show is it took, it took three years to see that.
Which is not surprising based on most of the turnarounds.
I'm going to withdraw my motion. I'm going to withdraw my motion so we don't, to avoid dealing with damage that I would believe it would do to, to, for the first time in 18 years on, that I've served on the board, to not have the courtesy of, of seconding up an amendment so it can be discussed. So I'm going to withdraw that. I'm going to make a different amendment that's, has a couple key words missing that might make this okay with, with people. So my new amendment is that, is to take what it says right now with no more than $100,000 to be expended prior to June 30, 2018, period.
For the sake of discussion, I will second it, but I will also vote against it.
So then you'd be voting against something that's not going to happen anyways. I mean...
But I did second it.
You did. I appreciate that.
Why that amount, Andrew?
Well, because it's, it's roughly, I mean, it would cover the entire amount of the needs assessment. It would cover a portion, close to half of the leadership coaching. John, you were saying you couldn't use, there wouldn't be enough days of probably leadership coaching to use...
And I think that that is approximating. John was saying, and I, I think that he's correct, that really, out of this, this fiscal year, we can only expend a certain amount. We can't pay for, it would be nice, since we have the money, to be able to pay for all the professional development throughout the year. But we really, at most, would probably be expending about 50% of what is, is in the contract. So if we could approve that, then we can do what, what is needed through the end of this fiscal year, and we can have the, the public consideration, and we can move forward with the board approving what happens during the next fiscal year.
That's a fair point. I'll withdraw. That was a, that was a mathematical error on my part. I'll withdraw the motion if the secondary agrees.
Agreed.
But I still want there to be something in there, so...
What are you trying to accomplish?
I'm trying, I'm trying to get, I'm trying to get some kind of, some, something in there that gives some kind of...
You want an oversight on the expenditure between now and the beginning of next fiscal year?
Right, and that, I guess, it gives some, it puts some notice in there that we can, that if the, that we could, I think it would give additional weight to if we felt in the unlikely event we needed to stop the process. And it's, it's really, I don't like, I don't like this. I don't like doing this. It's unfortunate, but I, I'm trying to do what I can to remove a question mark that I don't think ER really deserves based on their, their work. But sometimes the process, you know, I'm not going to, I know of other times where there were really good things that were happening, and a question mark about a detail had the potential to do serious damage to it.
So you're basically putting forth us approving partial...
This year's expenses...
Partial work, a partial contract.
This year's, we'd be approving this year's expenses, but the 394 is in there to still have authority to do the whole contract. I think it just gives us a better ability to...
I'm not sure, Andrew, that John could probably speak to this better than I can, but I'm not sure that motion is necessary, because we are only allowed to spend the amount for services that are going to be rendered under this fiscal year anyway. And as the services are structured, we're not going to be spending the $394,000 by June 30, 2018. So I, I think really what you're saying is what is going to happen anyway under the budgetary requirements of the state.
Yeah, true.
I get it. I, I hate the position that I'm put in, and I really hope I, except for emergency expenses like roof, emergency roof repair or something, or something that is a, you know, routine approval of, you know, even these referendum questions we're going to do, those all had, all the, those all had a, there's a public process. I mean, in the sense that the overall projects were approved this way. And this is not, this is not, this is not a trust question. This is not a, I don't think the administration would work hard to exit a contract in the unlikely event that services weren't rendered according to it, which I don't think will happen. I don't think that's going to be a problem, but I...
You know, when you think of it, we've had more public engagement sessions with public, with staff, about Washington in the past year and a half than we have any other one, any one school.
I think Andrew's motion, it's basically a, a safety valve. I, I, I get it. I, you know, I get it. And I understand, I mean, as a matter of course, it's going to happen anyway.
Right.
But it makes a statement that we are looking at it and will, you know, will examine it seriously based on, on what we see happen between now and June 30.
But do we run the risk of alienating the people that we're trying to have a contract with by putting all these stipulations in there?
Potentially.
We could. I mean, I...
Well, we've already got, we've already have that possibility with looking at, you know, trying to separate the needs assessment out and, and, you know, that conversation.
Right, but so far, we're at the up to 384.
With cut with the contract provision that we conduct the needs assessment and then have a public input session.
Right.
Where did that part come from, though?
That you're putting in the contract. It's not in the motion.
If not a motion, it's what you were directing me to write into the contract.
See, I don't, I don't, I'm not convinced, I'm not convinced, although I believe you will do it. I have no, I have zero doubt that you will do it. I don't believe that I, as an elected official, have done it unless it goes in the motion. So if, what was that that you said?
The services rendered would include the needs assessment, and following the needs assessment would be the public input session.
Okay, let me take care of my, the motion that I did, and then I'd like to see that language go into the motion that you just said, but those are separate things.
I think you withdrew your amendment for the $100,000, and you did not make a new motion.
Yeah, I did. And Katie seconded it for the purpose of discussion. I took off the, I took off the board...
But then you asked me to take back my second.
Then you took it off.
The second one, okay.
Then I did. I did.
Yep. There's no amendment.
There is no.
Okay, I'm, one more time, and then I'm going to, I'm going to write down what you said, repeat it, and make that as an amendment.
That, what you asked to include in the contract was that the needs assessment be conducted, and following the needs assessment would be a public input session.
Okay, I move to amend the motion to add that the needs assessment be conducted, and following the needs assessment, there will be additional opportunities for public input, including a public input session.
Second.
There's no money in that motion.
I am aware of that. I am trying, I'm trying my best to do something here where I can... It's just, ER is going to come in and do a great job for Washington. That's what's so hard here, but...
Let them do it.
It's within the up to, so...
But it's, it's not included in the up to, though, in his motion.
This, right. This guarantee, this is guaranteed, what it's doing, at least, at least what this is doing is it's putting in writing, instead of just consensus, outside the motion, it's putting in writing that we're going to have some opportunities for public input right away with the conclusion of the needs assessment. And if someone asks me tomorrow, can this, can they plow through this without, without public input opportunities? I say, nope, I, we, the motion says they can't. Instead of just, instead of just, I trust our attorney to not let that happen, because she won't, and she's very good at contracts. As an elected official, if this part is in, then I've, I, I can guarantee the public, the public input sessions after the needs assessment.
Is your motion, your amendment adding on after the up to $394,000? That language is added on to that? Okay.
So the dollar amount is in your motion?
It wasn't replacement, it was amendment.
It's an addition. It's an, it's an amendment that adds. The American Institute for Research be contracted to serve as the lead turnaround school partner at Washington Middle School for a cost of $394,000, up to $394,000 as presented, and that the needs assessment be conducted, and following the needs assessment, opportunities for public input, including a public input session, will be provided.
All right, so that's the motion on the table. So we're amending, we're now voting to amend the motion. Linda?
Could you read that back?
Yeah, but can you read it again?
It just seems...
I'm, I'm open to a different wording suggestion that does the same thing that I intend in a clearer way, cleaner way.
Will read, the lead turnaround partner at Washington Middle School, the recommended motion that American Institute for Research be contracted to serve as the lead turnaround partner at Washington Middle School up to a cost of $394,000, and that a needs assessment be conducted, and following the needs assessment, there would be an additional opportunities for public input to include a public input session. Does that meet your approval, Andy?
I think so. Is there something cleaner?
It's a lot of public inputs in there.
That's okay. It sounds fine.
The needs assessment be conducted and following a needs assessment, a public input session be conducted?
Followed by a needs assessment, or followed by a public input session.
Followed by a public input session, okay.
Because they're always available, I mean, they're always have the opportunity in public input. We do that all through our meetings.
Okay, right.
So this just adds a public input session?
Yeah, but this is a discrete thing, and it, it strongly implies, although I'm not putting it in contract, it strongly implies that it be a public, a public input session that their top team shows up for. But then it doesn't have to be tied to a board meeting, David, of course, so...
All right. That's the amendment. Linda?
Sitnikow?
No.
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Dorf?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Carried six one.
Now, could I call the question?
Okay, now we have the amended motion on the table. Katie would like to call the question. Is there any real good with that? All right. So now we're voting on the entire, the entire motion. Linda?
Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Dorf?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Sitnikow?
No.
Carried six one. All right. Thank you for all your work and future work.
I move that the United States Alliance Fire Protection Corporation be awarded the bid for fire protection work at Eisenhower Elementary School in the amount of $71,709, as presented, be approved.
Second.
Linda?
I had a question first, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I'm not used to seeing fire protection listed separately like this, or if it has been, I've missed it. Could you just explain what it is, Mr. Stankel?
Well, we did, at Eisenhower, it's taken separate primes for each of the larger contracts. The reason you haven't seen fire protection is that most of our schools presently don't have sprinkler systems. With the new construction, we're now, you know, providing more and more sprinkler systems. So with this being a larger component, we took it as a separate bid.
It's basically a sprinkler system for the new construction. So we anticipating that with other new construction then? And like the new Baird School, that would have a...
Yes, the new Baird School is a single prime, and we vote on that. It's all on your...
It'll be in there. Okay. Thank you.
All right, Linda?
McCoy?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Sitnikow?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Dorf?
Aye.
Carried seven zero.
I move that Mearon Construction be awarded the bid for general construction work at Jefferson Elementary School in the amount of $283,130, as presented, be approved.
Second.
Linda?
McCoy?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Dorf?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Sitnikow?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Carried seven zero.
I move that Northeastern Roofing Company be awarded the bid for firework at Wilder Elementary School in the amount of $274,800, as presented, be approved.
Second.
Linda?
Warren?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Sitnikow?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Dorf?
Aye.
Carried seven zero. Carried seven zero.
I move that the Immel Construction be awarded the bid for general construction work at the Doty Elementary School in the amount of nine hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars as presented, be approved.
Second.
Linda?
Wagner?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Dorf?
Aye.
Sitnikow?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Carried seven zero.
I move that IEI General Contractors be awarded the bid for general construction work at the Keller Elementary School in the amount of nine hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars as presented, be approved.
Second.
Linda?
McCoy?
Aye.
Dorf?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Sitnikow?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Carried seven zero.
I move that Murphy Concrete and Construction Incorporated be awarded the bid for the parking lot replacement work at the Head Start Learning Center in the amount of one hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars, three hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars and ninety-five cents as presented, be approved.
Second.
Can you read the number again?
Yeah, one hundred and thirty-two thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars and ninety-five cents. Thank you.
Linda?
Sitnikow?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Dorf?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Carried seven zero.
I move that Murphy Concrete and Construction Incorporated be awarded the bid for the parking lot replacement work at Kennedy Elementary School in the amount of two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, five hundred and fifty-nine dollars and ninety cents as presented, be approved.
Second.
Linda?
Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Dorf?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Sitnikow?
Aye.
Carried seven zero.
I move that Murphy Concrete and Construction Incorporated be awarded the bid for the parking lot replacement work at the Dr. Rosa Manoka Hill School in the amount of one hundred and nineteen thousand, eight hundred and forty-nine dollars and nine cents as presented, be approved.
Second.
Linda?
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Dorf?
Aye.
Sitnikow?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Carried seven zero.
I move that Murphy Concrete and Construction Incorporated be awarded the bid for the parking lot replacement work at Southwest High School in the amount of three hundred and forty-four thousand dollars, three hundred and forty-four thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars and sixty-two cents as presented, be approved. Those Murphys need to round up.
Second. They're precise.
McCoy?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Sitnikow?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Dorf?
Aye.
Carried seven zero.
I move that the employment of staff is listed, be approved.
Second.
Linda?
Becker?
Aye.
Sitnikow?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Carried seven zero. I move for adjournment of the special board meeting?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, we'll go right into our teaching and learning.
We do a five-minute recess?
No, because we've had guests that have been here for an hour and twenty minutes longer than they were expecting. So I want to bring them to the table for our open forum and then we can take a break after that. That's you.
Yes, in a minute.
Wait, who is that?
Bridges Construction. Have a table over there and they were supposed to be laid out for you and Ed to give them out.
Where are they on the agenda?
They're in open forum. Open forum, Katie. No, they were just gonna come before the board.
Please do.
Go ahead, start, yes.
Hello.
My name is Lori Peacock, I'm the Director of College Career and Community Readiness for the Green Bay Area Public School District. My address is three zero two one East River Drive, Green Bay, Wisconsin. So thank you for allowing us the opportunity to recognize the Bridges Construction and Renovation Advisory Team. I am joined at the table by Doug Yonkey, the instructor for Bridges, and Brooke Miller, who many of you know as our Coordinator of College Career and Community Readiness, who works with us to support this program. The Bridges Construction and Renovation, BCR Advisory Team, represents business and industry leaders and our turbocharged partner, Northeast Wisconsin Technical College. We have worked collaboratively with these experts in the field to provide an innovative career pathway in architecture and construction, which is available to juniors and seniors from all five high schools in the district. The BCR Advisory Team provides leadership, direction, and guidance to us in addition to mentoring our students and providing hands-on opportunities to construct homes, garages, and storage sheds in Green Bay's neighborhoods. Students involved in Bridges Construction and Renovation work with professional contractors to learn about structural design, building safety, blueprint reading, rough and finished construction, modern design and home improvements. Students also explore the application of carpentry, masonry, home wiring, plumbing, and architectural design. Students earn three high school credits and eight college credits from NWTC.
Today, we would like to recognize the following individuals for their work on behalf of our students, families, and community. I'll read their names and then ask that they come forward to be recognized by the board and receive a plaque to express our appreciation for all they do to ensure our students are college career and community ready. We did lose some already, so Bill Monfrey of Quality Insulators, he had to leave, he had another engagement. Elizabeth Roddy from the Associated Builders and Contractors of Wisconsin.
She's unable to join us tonight.
Elise Opicka from Northern Concrete and Big Ox Energy Group.
Unable to join us tonight.
Mary McAllister Charles from the Brown County Home Builders Association.
Also unable to join us tonight, sorry.
We do have Sherry Galecki of Delirious Construction. Cora Haltofterhite from the Habitat for Humanity of Green Bay had to leave. Ryan Foley from H.J. Martin, wasn't able to make it. Tim Dennison from Neighbor Works of Green Bay.
He's not here.
Marlene Goetheer from Northeast Wisconsin Technical College, she had to leave. And Todd Keel from Northeast Wisconsin Technical College.
Yes, he should go up there.
Right.
This is our instructor as well. He does incredible things with our kids and for our kids.
I want to thank you for, for your work and, and commitment to our students. And I know that through your team effort, you really do provide amazing opportunities for, for our students to be able to learn the, learn a lot in the construction trade. And I know I went to the house that was built last year and it was fun to not only see the work that the students had done, but they were just thrilled that they had done this work and that people were interested enough to come and see their work. So thank you for all that you do.
Thank you for your endurance tonight.
Yes, thank you.
And patience.
All right, at this point, I guess why don't, I don't think I have anyone else that would like to speak before the board this evening. So at this point, we will take a break and start back with our teaching and learning work session. We have seven board members present tonight. Also at the table, we're joined by Dr. Langfeld, our superintendent, and two intercity student council members, Claire Wellhouse from Southwest and also Luke Pizzani, also from Southwest. And to my far left is Linda Blahoe, our Board Secretary. And around the table are members of the superintendent's cabinet. So at this point, I will turn the teaching and learning work session over to Katie Maloney.
Thank you, Brenda. We will begin with a discussion led by CISA VII with regard to feedback from our community forums. We're joined by Jeff Dickard and Erin Melchesky.
For those of you who don't know us, I'm Jeff Dickard, I am the Agency Administrator at CISA VII. And this is Erin Melchesky, he is our Business Development Director. It was a privilege for us to run your community engagement sessions on school safety. We did some work previously, so some of you have seen us before with the Washington school issue. And again, we ran two sessions. One would have been on March tenth, on a Saturday, and I personally ran that one at Preble High School. And Erin just ran one a week ago on April thirtieth. In my case, there was over a hundred people participating. And in Erin's, due to the snowstorm, it was rescheduled and there's about thirty, so a little over thirty. We use the CAFE model again, and it's a model that we've used quite often and it really brings out everybody's voice. Oftentimes, other ways of doing it, there's nothing wrong with it, but it doesn't give everybody a chance to get their ideas down. Sometimes softer spoken people don't get all their ideas down. This, this gets everything. It was, we, we had nine hundred and eighteen data points and we have shared all the information with you and I believe you have all that this evening. And tomorrow, we will be bringing over the couple of boxes with all the paper written stuff, so that'd be part of your records. So you have all nine hundred and eighteen data points. We draw some themes and executive synopsis for you. But you certainly have all the information that you want to read through all nine hundred and eighteen. You can draw all of your own themes and trends. But Erin, I've dealt with all the data, is going to take you through all that and we'll kind of go through a synopsis of everything that we've had in general and then on the questions that we asked, and then I think we'll take some input. So Erin, go ahead.
Yeah, like Jeff had mentioned, we had over nine hundred data points that came forward in the, between the two listening sessions. So it's all cumulative data between both sessions together here. So what I did is I took an opportunity at the very beginning of it to just kind of snapshot the stuff that was jumping out, some of the common themes that we saw and stuff that through the question development, I thought was important and wanted to bring that forward right up front, so it wasn't hidden between some data. So as you see, for the, I'm looking at the data summary for listening sessions page. That second bullet point down, it identifies that there were fifteen comments that supported more weapons or armed guards through the schools, while there were twenty-six comments directly opposing more weapons or armed guards in our schools. And you'll see an overwhelming theme that comes through in many of the data points. There were forty-eight comments that directly suggested the need for more mental or emotional support services. So I just wanted to bring those three data points to the forefront. As I look at the overall themes, again, the overwhelming support to increase the funding and support surrounding mental emotional health. The theme of more counselors, more school psychologists, and even seeking supports from county services came across in many of our questions that we got, got some feedback on. There were more comments as we saw opposing the increase of weapons or armed guards in the schools. The, the lack of communication of safety plans was commented on several of the different questions as you read through there. And what we learned, that families want to be better educated as to the full gamut. What exactly is all into the plans? How often are they being drilled? What are student expectations and things along those lines? And we'll get a little more into that as we go forward. As I mentioned, desired more about Alice. You know, I know, I understand the Green Bay District is one of the first in the area to onboard that. And the families, actually, I have one comment of a, of a parent who was there said, having heard what I heard tonight at the last session, she felt so much better about the safety plans that are in place she just hadn't been real aware of. And suggested, as parents, if they're learning more about the Alice, she felt that that feeling would be felt by other parents as well. So regular updates and information about what it is, the trainings, the drills that take place, and many suggestions that came across of hosting other listening sessions or parent involvement nights, specifically to Alice, and how they can help their children and reinforce their children's involvement in reacting to those active threat situations. Along the line of weapons and armed, and armed guards in the schools, a comment that came forward quite often too was supporting the current SRO structure that, that is in the schools now. And increasing the number of SROs to ensure each building is adequately covered. Ensuring that the roles of the SRO is well established, established, excuse me, for both the SRO and for the staff of the school. Saying that the relationship piece of the SRO with staff and students is a very important aspect, that relationship. As you read through that raw data, was time and again, what is that relationship to the SRO, the student? What are the expectations of that SRO as far as what are they responding to? So a lot of comments about defining that role very well. As we get into the individual question themes, and I'll, and I'll hit on the, the brief points that stood out for each question to go forward. Question one, as a community member, parent, teacher, what concerns do you have regarding student-staff safety in the Green Bay schools? Communication stood out on this one again, just what's going on with all community stakeholders. So parents and, and community and fire and police, those comments came forward on that one. Ensuring that staff are properly trained to manage difficult students and situations and that that training is consistent and it is kind of refreshed on a, on a repetitive basis to make sure that they are, in fact, properly trained and ready to deploy those skills. Seeking additional funding to support the mental emotional health issues. Being culturally sensitive to work and communicate in a family's native language. You're going to see that one come up a few different times too underneath the communication. And having strong and consistent protocol for entering and exiting all of the school buildings. I noted several comments in there that some of the buildings had different protocols to come in and out depending on maybe their front entryway or if they have someone, a person power at that front desk area. The second question that was asked was in regards to school safety procedures. What do you want to know that you don't already know? Again, the communication that came up in education was, that really stood out to me as I looked through the data here. A strong desire to be educated on the school's safety plans. Again, suggestions from the parents to host different opportunities for them to come in and learn firsthand as to what those procedures are and how different situations will be handled. And how will the school communicate if and when there is an active threat situation? How will parents be notified? How are they communicating internally? So some of those educational pieces they were interested in. Funding additional security measures, again, was, was mentioned frequently. Many concerns about security measures taking away from other budgetary items or having to pick and choose over school safety in textbooks, for example. And, and making sure that we're, we're allocating proper funds in each direction. And then also like question one, having a strong, consistent protocol for entering and exiting all school buildings. For number three was specifically asking to the police chief's thoughts of placing an armed officer in the schools. Pros and cons was kind of how it was brought on. The, the common pros that were there would be identifying the ability to potentially deter or respond to an active threat in a quicker fashion. And the perception that the atmosphere is in fact safer with that armed officer in the schools. Those were the two that stood out. For the cons, obviously, the costs associated with was time and again mentioned throughout, just whatever question. Who's paying for it? How's it be funded and how much is it going to cost? Addressing the root cause and with suggestion that mental emotional health issues are at the root cause of this was mentioned several times in the questions. A couple of different times it was listed out that this could increase anxiety for staff and students by having more weapons or more armed officers or guards in the buildings. Acknowledging the fact that there's too many ways to enter a building to consider a for sure, in quotes, solution, that an armed intruder's not necessarily just going to come through the front door. In other situations that their armed guard or officer would be responding to in the schools were some of the questions and cons that went with that. Some of the comments I saw themed with asking for data that would support the armed security officers would in fact offer a safer school. Many comments about positive and negative, both positive and negative, school perception from staff, students, community members, if armed guards were present in the school. And many comments again about funding. Also, a lot of comments about the full scope of the position, what will they be required to respond to and how, how will they respond to it? For question four, it was, given no financial staffing limitations, and your view, what does a solid school safety plan look like? Many comments were surrounding building improvements such as door locks, door jams, protective glass and film over windows, things along those lines. Many comments again surrounding mental emotional health, education, and resources to get at the root cause. Finding that balance between district safety measures, but assuring that our buildings are still welcoming and not like locked down like a prison with bars and, and windows and things of that nature. And again, the, having a. And again, the having a strong consistent protocol of safety plans and drills for each building came up as a common theme as well. And the last bullet point, ease of initial notification if a problem exists, and also notification to parents throughout an active threat situation. So again, that communication piece, how will the parents be involved in that part, knowing there'll be a flurry of activity of communication going to and from district in an active threat situation? Question five is, how can parents, students, and community members play an active role in school safety? Communication came out on top again. And one of the pieces I found interesting is, is parents want to be able to be educated as to how to communicate with their kids about this as well. Not just know what's going on, but know how to support and reinforce this at home. I saw that come through on a number of data points. Communication between schools and families, again, the school's safety plans, more information about the Alice, and additional focus on the listening sessions, so families can share their opinions as well as getting educated. And creating safe venues for information to be shared. So taking that notion of if you see something, say something, ensuring that there's a safe way for students and/or parents to be able to communicate that out. And a lot of data points again suggesting around parent engagement with the schools and the district, and a lot of questions of how does that happen though? You know, I saw a lot of statements and questions asking, yep, it's important, but how do we foster that and get that parent group involved? Question six, what ways would you recommend improving communication between schools and community regarding school safety? Again, that education around Alice specifically came up, host those parent learning nights, shared updates regarding the drills that have taken place in the schools. Communicate using the family's native language was listed quite a few times there. Using the current tools of communication, the robocalls, texting, Facebook emails, et cetera, to communicate on a regular basis along school safety lines. And work with the media outlets to post the positive stories. A lot of comments around too often, the negative stories generate the tension. If there's means to focus on the positive things that the district is doing around school safety would be a benefit. And question seven, the other concerns about school safety that they feel that we feel you're missing at this point? Many comments about paying attention to guns and armed guards instead of mental emotional health issues. Many comments concerned about safety in other areas of the school community, such as the buses or walking to and from school after hour activities and et cetera. Ensuring that there's adequate staff trainings going on to manage active threat situations and difficult students and situations. And ensuring that there's adequate staffing and supervision at each school was mentioned quite a few times as well with question seven. So that's a quick walkthrough, the seven questions and the 900 some data points and the themes that I drew from those data points.
And it's kind of interesting, just noting that from several years ago, probably 10 years ago or so, you used to have safety plans, you're required to have them, you used to have trainings and so on, and we were taught not to share any of that information with anybody. You had that information, that's our information, the police know, but nobody else. And you can see the times have kind of changed now where you're getting asked more to share more with the community, that you actually do have a really solid safety plan, you do practice, you do have a lot of things. And I think the times have changed on that, and you can see that the people are asking for a little different way of looking at things than what we actually went out and trained everybody to do it a little differently 10 years ago. So it's kind of interesting when you really look at those things, and that was kind of something I took away just from the session I ran. So, questions, comments, or anything else?
Andrew.
If I may, the one that sort of jumped out to me among others is, a parent was perceptive, how do I communicate with my kid while something's going on there? And that's not one I had thought of, but yes, that's terribly important, they all have their cell phones, and do we direct them to let their parents know what's going on or not? Or a lot needs to be talked about with that one.
Right. And even with a great plan, you know, something's, right, they're going to continuously do that. I mean, there's people that have those plans all laid out, and yet, there's people from inside the room already saying, we're in a lockdown in this room. And so that's going to be something you're going to have to wrestle with, with even third graders having cell phones in the classroom now.
Andrew.
I was really impressed with the CAFE format. I also think it's important that we maintain the traditional open mic format that we added to the board meeting. It provide opportunities for multiple styles of communication, and for me, confirmed a lot of, you know, what I had been hearing, but getting it down on paper, that there seems to be a strong majority behind preventive services, and first, and then armed guards not being very popular.
Yeah. Well, and one of them takes longer than the other, right? And we've been cutting mental health services in our educational programming for years, and even at the county services and so on in support. So we know that one coming back's going to take a little longer. I mean, we just know that.
I also enjoyed the format. It might have been a little skeptical, but I thought it was great.
Thank you.
I think people felt really comfortable, and they were able to share, and obviously we got a lot of information. I'm wondering, where can we share this? Are we interested in sharing this with the county? Are we able, because I mean, it took a lot of time, energy to get all the information and gather it. We know that it's a conversation that's happening around the community in general, and the county does provide services, but I think to hear from families, you know, I don't know what our plan is with this, but I'm hoping we can share it somehow.
Usually, it gets put on our website, doesn't it?
Yeah, we'll post it, but I think from your perspective and what I'm hearing, and what we certainly heard and hear, that I think you're referencing is the fact that there is a loud cry for additional services. So we could send it to, it's Eric, right? At, yeah.
Right. It's your information.
We can send that if the board is willing to share that information and provide that.
We're going to use this information, and then at the next board meeting, share the survey results from students, the superintendent's parent committee, staff, administrators, and district office personnel. And then the hope would be to utilize this for writing grants moving forward. And we'll talk about that on the 21st as well.
And there's some new things coming from the state as well, so there's going to be other opportunities for everybody to get involved. And most of the things, most of the grants and most of those other ones that are coming forward, you have to partner with the county. You have to partner with your local police department depending on your situation. So I think this will be great data and great information to have for them already, where they don't have to duplicate it in their own listening sessions. And a lot of the county was there, and the city was there as well.
Yeah, it was great to see the support from the legislatures, you know, joining the sessions and the local fire and the county, so.
Yep. So it's going to be a lot of work coming forward.
But I do think, I do think that the, having county people there and city people there, and people in policy decision-making places. It was very, very helpful. And also, of course, the board, so.
Very good. So that's all the information, and again, we use it to work through your situations as you go, and you've heard a good, a lot of input from your public, and that was the design of that day, day and day in the evening, so.
I know I attended both sessions. Did we tell the people at the session where they could find the compiled results?
We did. We said that we would present them, at least, I should say, to the board, and then that the board would put it on their website.
Okay, so we did say that.
Because it's your information, not ours.
We had that same announcement at the 21st.
Right, right.
Right, and Lori made us make that announcement. Lori said, hey, you got to tell them that, so.
Okay.
All right? Very good.
Any other questions, comments? No? Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks for having us.
All right, we have several other discussion items. First one, advanced placement world history resources.
This is discussion, but thank you for, thank you for being willing to do that.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mike Fries. I'm with the Teaching and Learning Department. Nice to see everyone. Joined tonight at the table by Ms. Elizabeth Taylor from the Curriculum Department, Teaching and Learning Department, a curriculum coordinator. This evening, we start with AP World History. Thanks again for the opportunity to present to you tonight. This first request is for approval for an updated text resource for our Advanced Placement World History course. This comes on the heels of updating our AP World History curriculum documents to meet the revised expectations that the college board set forth as of 2017. This new resource provides us continued alignment to college board expectations, and was selected according to the textbook adoption review process. The recommended resource is, in fact, an updated version of the current text. In case you weren't aware, AP World History currently has two sections running at East High School taught by Mr. Brian Nast, two sections at Southwest High School taught by Mr. Tony Kraszewski, and six sections at Preble High School taught by Mr. David Kerner and Mr. Tim Larson. Since 2015, since the 2015 school year, these teachers, these fine teachers, have grown their collective enrollment from 307 students to 444 students, which is quite remarkable for advanced placement course growth. Earning a score of three or above on the end of course exam, AP exam, of course, translates into college credit at many, if not most, post-secondary institutions. So once again, Ms. Beth Taylor from Teaching and Learning can speak a little bit more about the resource request, and then we're happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Hello. So this fall, the college board initiated a revised course description and expectations. So this winter, the AP World teachers met to collaborate and review the renewed college board descriptions and expectations in order to revise our GPAPs curriculum and materials, and to select materials. They went through a multi-step process. The first stage of the process was to develop the course essential documents, the course overviews, and the curriculum documents that support the sequence and pacing of their AP World History course. With that in place, aligned to the new expectations by college, from college board, the team then moved on to reviewing the college board recommended materials. As they reviewed each material, they looked at it in reference to the expectations from college board and our new curriculum. They analyzed materials to decide which material would, which resource would be the most supportive to the new curriculum, and the expectations and objectives of college board AP World History. Their final selection was The Earth and Its Peoples. It's a Cengage title by Billiet. It's the seventh edition. The Teaching and Learning Department supports the diligent efforts of this team and recommends the adoption of this material.
At this time, if there are any questions, happy to entertain them.
Questions, comments? Hearing done, we'll move that forward.
There was a question about, just on the budget, about the shipping cost. It, you know, 10% looked a little high, was that, it says estimated, but.
It is estimated. It's about $3,000, estimated from the publisher.
This is similar to what Melissa was referring to earlier in terms of can't quite finalize the exact contractual details until we have final approval. So we have, based on the quote that was provided us, and then should you approve it, we'll work with Jake in the purchasing department to verify and clarify. And in our experience this year, he has saved us a lot of money in these particular areas. So we would anticipate that the final result, resulting cost would be a bit lower.
Fair enough, thanks.
Thank you. All right. Let's move that forward.
Thank you.
K-5 English Language Arts Resources.
Good evening. We are coming before you today, this evening, to recommend our Phase Two of our literacy library collections. Many of you might be aware that in 2016, the Board of Education adopted the units of study for teaching reading. And in June of 2017, and then you adopted the first phase of our classroom library collection of materials. This evening, we're looking at proposing a Phase Two. And with us tonight is our pre-K-12 literacy coordinator, Lyndon Teskey, to address you with the proposed request.
Okay. This is Phase Two, and what it does is it gives an additional collection of below-level, at-level, and above-level text for classrooms. The addition helps, we know that with all kids, the amount of reading increases not only their reading level, but reading achievement in general, and academic achievement in general. So within our literacy framework, every day, kids have about 60 minutes of actual reading instruction. So within that time, there's a mini lesson of the actual skill, and then the kids have a chance to go into small groups, and teachers help lift the level of reading instruction, but also then they take that into independent reading to actually consolidate all the learning that they have done. So to do that, if we have texts that are at their level and at their interest, kids are much more engaged in reading, and that baits them into more reading, increases their reading achievement, which also increases academic achievement. And so that's what's behind the Teaching and Learning Department's literacy instruction, but also why we're going with this proposal of Phase Two. Because in Phase One, we did what we could with the money we had to make sure they had high-interest texts, that fiction and nonfiction. Now we want to go in and make sure that we even hit both ends again, to make sure we're hitting all kids, so that everybody has access to the materials. And then also, we targeted within those units of study, certain components that hit social studies and science as well. And so when we increased that into little book clubs, where teachers can actually have kids talking about texts, we increased the level of engagement as well. So that's what's behind this proposal.
Couple of questions. First, I was curious about the third grade. You know, the amount is significantly more than the other grades. What's happening at third grade that is reflected in that?
Yes. At third grade, what I did is I, the additional, there's a shelf that says significantly below grade level, and we have some kids, when I was actually just at one of the schools, and they said to hit some of those kids that are significantly below, they needed below-level texts. And this shelf actually hit below level, and an abundance of below level, because you have to really engage those kids, and they go through them faster. It's FGH, and FGHs are, they're building into chapter books, there's some lower-level chapter books, but you also get through, if you want volume reading in third grade, they can read, they have stamina, can sustain themselves for long periods of time, so they can get through more books. So you need additional, lots of books at that level to close that gap.
Okay. The other question, as we look at these resources and the titles, I know that at one time, we were, as we would look at a given title, and you mentioned, you know, at grade level, below grade level, above grade level, are we still looking at three titles with basically the same story? And, no, not doing that anymore?
Good question, yeah. No, it's, it's, there's not whole group instruction any, at this point in time, there isn't whole group, there's whole group instruction as far as a skill, but then when that skill is taken into the level the student can actually apply it with. So then they go into small groups that actually target the data that shows where those kids are at, and then from that, they go into independent, where the teacher meets with them to see if they're transferring it into their independent level. So it's going from instructional level to independent level. So we have layers of instruction within the instruction, so that we're hitting more kids and actually lifting. If we go just to teaching at one level, and just say you're above kids, all the kids, then those kids that are below really decrease in achievement instead of increasing. And if you don't monitor that, when we monitor it, then we can hit those kids at instructional level every time we meet with them, and we can help scaffold that skill into independence, because ultimately, it has to go to independence. You can't keep it in instructional. If you teach them all a whole group, you lose a lot of kids first month, the second month, you could lose a few more. If you're monitoring, you can always pick those kids up, and you're making sure they're in instructional.
And that's what was happening when we would have, again, the, you know, the same title, but the books at different levels, so that just wasn't working out very well.
Same, it wouldn't be the same title with books at different level. It would bend the same title across at the same level. If they have the same title, then if, if they have the same title, they would be at the same level. Are you talking about the same subject, like a content? Is that what you mean?
Yeah, I thought, and I see Jane back there, didn't, wasn't there, I mean, we've got a book on polar bears, and we have one at. we've got a book on polar bears, and we have one at, like, at three levels.
So, subject area, you're talking about a subject area. Okay, subject area at multiple levels, that's a possibility, and especially if you're teaching about, of nonfiction.
Yeah.
You could start with a lower level to give them background, and then that increases their chances of reading at a higher level. So, there's sometimes where the instructional piece is still in place, the same theory is in play, it just might be at multiple, because we're going for engagement, it might be at a subject they're interested in. So, we may not always have exactly the same types of levels, but if you're teaching how to read nonfiction, how to read nonfiction might be taught whole group, where you look at different subcategories, and then you'd bring it into lower-level texts, up into higher-level texts. Same concept, transferred into different levels of engagement.
I think, I think it was just my Title I teachers at the time misled me, so it was just...
And I work with Jane really closely, and you saw me in her office, yes, so that's not true.
No, that wasn't, that's not true at all.
Hi, it's good to see you, Jane.
She's glad she came now.
If I could do a follow-up to what Mr. York was talking about, can you talk to us about, you, you have a larger number of, of lower-level texts that you're readers or what have you in third grade, but you have fewer, and so, what happens? It, it looks, I mean, are you seeing a significant drop in readership? You know what I'm saying? Are we, are kids going down by the time they get to third grade? Are they becoming less proficient in reading and literacy? That is the, the number that I keep watching and that I'm being held accountable for.
Right.
So, I need to know more, and like to drill a little deeper with this if we're ordering, what, what, how will that balance the work that you're doing?
Right. So, at kindergarten, we actually went a little bit below and a, a grade level, and a level above, and then at first grade, we did the same thing, but there's, there's spread, isn't as wide there.
So, it's the broader range you're talking about.
Right, and these units came into play about two years ago, so we're still closing that gap, and at certain, if you want to make sure you catch them, when we started to assess for instructional and independent level, you notice that with the, if they assess that, we didn't always do independent level, so we're checking independent level and instructional level, and when there's a wide gap like this, it means we're not always transferring everything to independence, and that's where they'll assess that, and that's where they'll work independently. So, as we look at that data closer, we're trying to close that as fast as we can by third grade and catch those, but we did also have multiple levels at fourth and fifth as well.
So, there's just more levels to cover. There's just, it's a broader range.
Right, right.
And you also said they go through them faster?
Right.
So, a third grader that's reading a lower-level book's going to read it faster than a first grader?
Right, you want more, more words, the more words read per day, the, the increases achievement. So, when, when the books are shorter, they go through more books.
Fact, yeah.
And so, you want to be ready for them, and you want to also, there's a wide range, because if you don't hit the interest level, they, they aren't going to read. And so, it's a lot of levels, a lot of different subject areas to make sure we bring up the engagement.
Okay. That helps me, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments?
And I stayed at, oh, sorry. I stayed at the table because we have the parallel request for, for sixth grade, in terms of the classroom library request, we have the same framework that goes all the way through sixth grade, and so Lynda can also answer any questions you may have with the sixth grade proposal as outlined there.
It would be the Grade Six English Language Arts Resources.
Yes.
Is our next action item, or our next discussion item.
Right, so we've gone K-5, and now we're moving into sixth grade. Same theory, same philosophy, going to sixth grade, putting classroom libraries into play because sixth graders need, again, you really have to hit engagement, don't we? And so, we have multiple levels at different interest levels in classroom libraries, so kids will act, students will actually go and pick up classroom library books that are engaging and have been, what happens with these, these books, especially for middle, well, for all of them, but when you get to middle school, they had a panel of, panel of experts across the country, research books, so they brought in all the books that sixth grade teachers actually said kids are really engaged in. And so, they took that from those, they even deselected from those and got down to the really highly engaged books. When kids start to read, if they don't pick up a book that's highly engaging, they drop it right away, and then teachers don't have something to even confer in or just kind of sell on them around something that they have a background in and an interest in. And that's a big key, and it also has to be a level they can read highly successful, like ninety-eight percent. Look at us, if we want to read for enjoyment, we don't pick up a book that's hard for us, that we have to stumble on every word. It has to be comprehension and fluency that they can read. And so, we have a wide variety, so we're hoping it can be fun and exciting to be reading and then talking about books. Lot of talk is built in, even partners, small groups, teachers getting in there and being really engaged in what kids are thinking, and that builds into social, emotional, because a lot of times, those topics are something you can talk about and relate to, and it builds engagement, it also builds community.
Do we have books that reflect the rich diversity of our student body?
Yes, that's what's, part of the research is, is the equity. Do you have people that look like me in all of them? Do you have topics that talk about me? Do you have women? Do you have different shapes, sizes? There's a lot to equity that makes it feel more like it's you, different backgrounds, family constructions, those types of things.
And we've engaged with our Equity Department as part of our bookroom audits and then having conversations around how to identify and select a resource that is in alignment with board policy, but also, you know, has culturally responsive views throughout as main, rather than token or ancillary, subject matter or characters. Also, it aligns with the subject matter and the genres within the curriculum itself of what's being studied, so that it is a priority that students can see themselves and their experiences in the text that we select.
Good. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll move that forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next is High School Art Content Essential Documents.
Finally, this evening, from the Secondary Teaching and Learning Department, approval is being requested for High School Art Content Essential Documents. This board report outlines the process that was followed, as well as the participants who contributed to updating the district's high school art curricular documents. This work aligns with our continuous improvement efforts in the realm of academic excellence and is part of our ongoing curriculum cycle. As you may know, the presence of the IB curriculum at West, the Fine Arts Institute at East, and an earlier adopted NWTC dual-credit partnership over at Southwest from many years ago, has resulted in our art departments at the high school level having some significant variance in their capstone experiences. So, this opportunity made it possible for us to outline some commonalities that can exist in our foundational levels across district schools. This time, Curriculum Coordinator Alyssa Hoffman will offer a few remarks, and then we'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
All right. So, starting in 2015, we began working on the elementary art curriculum, and then in 2016, we did middle school, and now in 2017, we've done the high school curriculum. So, the national standards came out in 2014, and we are well up to date. Tonight, we are presenting our Level One and Level Two courses, so we have Drawing and Painting One and Two, Ceramics and Sculpture One and Two, World Art and Culture, Advanced Art One and Two, and then we do have two name changes. We took Design One and Design Two, and we updated those names to better reflect the content of the courses. So, we have Design and Visual Communication, and then we have Advanced Design and Motion Media, and that is the course in which we plan to integrate quite a bit of technology to match industry standards. So, we do plan to update that one as well. We have an increased focus on other things as well, such as artist statements, curation of art, career pathways in art, and historical and cultural context and significance of art. Any questions?
Questions or comments?
Those last thing, those last things you just mentioned, was that the, what was added? Man, we have state standards that are old and national standards that are new.
Yes.
Were those the things added, basically, the, from the national standards?
Yes, that's correct. The Wisconsin standards are from 2000. They are up for renewal in 2019, 20.
Oh, okay.
And we anticipate that they will reflect the nationals, so we'll hopefully still be aligned.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll move that forward, thank you.
Thank you, thanks, Alyssa.
Okay, next will be the Technical College Course Program Start College Now policy and Technical College Course Program Start College Now procedures.
Capital Erica here too. Dr. Khan, your reward for sticking around all night, is he good to join us at the table?
Katie, would you be willing to allow us to talk about the next two policies, because they go hand in hand?
Gladly.
Item?
Gladly.
Okay, thank you. Before you tonight, you have Policy 343.45, Start Technical College Course Program and the associated rule for Start College Now, and 343.46, Policy and Rule for the Early College Credit Program. We also provided to you a chart that compares this policy and the other related policies. The biennial budget from the state repealed course options and youth options and replaced those two programs with Start College Now and the Early College Credit Program, and also reinstituted the Part-Time Public School Open Enrollment Program, which will be the third policy that we're discussing tonight. So, these policies provide educational opportunities for kids to take courses in our tech college schools, as well as in our four-year college institutes. And the Part-Time Public Open Enrollment replaces course options, and if you recall, prior to course options, we had part-time open enrollment, and it allows kids in the high school grades to take up to two classes in another public school district, K-12, in the state of Wisconsin.
Questions? Comments? Brenda?
Um, no, I can't find it. There was, and it's in more than one place, but I can't even find it in one place, a comment about that if a student has a disability, that it might, the cost of having them participate in one of these two programs, the Early College or Start College Now programs, that we would deny that student? And I'm wondering, in what situation would that happen? I mean, what would, what, when would a college, one of our either four-year or technical colleges, charge us more for a student with disabilities, and what would they be charging for? Gosh, I just had it, I came for it too.
Right, it's towards the end of one of the earlier sections in each of the policies, I believe.
Yeah.
Okay, so this is the, in the 343.45, it is Section Three C?
Oh, here it is, I just found it, yeah.
Eric found it, and sort of Mike.
Well, I have it in 343.45 Rule.
Okay, yep.
One, one E. I think it says the same thing in both places, except different college program.
So, this goes to that same undue financial burden language that we used to see in the open enrollment legislation as well. Claudia's here tonight, but this would probably be if a student needed a one-on-one para to accompany them to attend a tech school or a four-year college, that could potentially be an undue financial burden to a school district.
And if that student were a full-time student at one of those schools, do they get charged for that service, or does that become part of what they get with tuition?
Well, if they're a full-time student enrolled in that institution, then that would be under, under the IDA for that institution when they're enrolled in that institution.
Okay, but they aren't covered by...
ADA. I'm sorry.
They aren't covered by that, coming from our district, just for one class into the college.
They would be still covered under their IEP, under the IDEA.
But we would be responsible.
We're responsible for the class.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll move that forward.
I like your chart.
That's a great chart.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Because these are all very complicated and they change.
We've used the chart ourselves as we worked through this.
Mm-hmm.
So, did you have any other questions then on Policy 425, the Part-Time Public School Open Enrollment Policy? That's grouped in that chart as well.
Did you have a question? No, I said it's an interesting concept.
It's all interesting. Thank you.
Great.
And thanks to Eric and Mike, who worked very, very, very hard on getting these policies done. Mike loves policy, so he's a great partner to work with, and we're converting Eric.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay, Procedures for Staff Responsible and Acceptable Technology Use.
So, if you recall, we brought forward, I believe it was in 2016, revisions to what was then the acceptable use policy, now called our Responsible Use Policy. And the Responsible Use Policy covers staff, kids, and community members, and we were going to bring, and we have a rule that applies to kids, we were going to bring forward the rule that applies to adults, but we wanted to do that in conjunction with the social media policy as well. So, we have finally completed that large work in drafting a social media policy, so we are now bringing forward to you the Procedures for Staff Responsible and Acceptable Technology Use. This has been reviewed by a number of individuals here in the district and staff in our buildings, and this is the product that is going really hand-in-hand with the next agenda item, which is the social media policy.
Comments?
A big thanks to Vicky Santa Croce and Diane for all their work on the, the rule that we brought forward. They did a lot of work as well on that.
Okay, we have the Part-Time Public School Open Enrollment Policy, you've covered that.
Covered that.
So, now we are going to the Social Media Policy.
Okay.
Do you want the PowerPoint?
Yep. Kristin, could you pull up the PowerPoint for that? And then I just need the clicker. I lost my committee. I don't think anyone's left. Oh, Ellen's still here. Yep, and Gina's here at the table too. So, last summer, the board had asked us to put together a social media policy to address the ever-developing world of social media and our use of that here in the district, and our constituents' use, our, I don't want to say customers, but our parents and our students and our staff. So, we were able to do that and had a really nice process to develop this, the policy and the rules that you're going to see tonight. We're going to review tonight, because this is, we don't normally do a PowerPoint for our policies, but because this was such a large task and the policy is very encompassing as well as the rules, we wanted to just make sure that we covered all of the various different points of the policy and the rules. So, we're going to go over the why, we're going to talk to you about the policy drafting process and our desired results, the purpose of the policy and the rules, we'll give you a policy and rule overview. Of course, the policy and the rule are a little lengthy, so we can't highlight everything, but I'd love to answer your questions, and talk about the budgetary implications, because there are budgetary, budgetary implications for this policy and rule, and then what our implementation plan is. I just want you to know that last week, I had the honor of meeting with the GBA Executive Committee to review this information and to answer any questions or concerns that they had. They had some really good questions and some really good suggestions, and I know that Justin is here tonight, and I don't want to speak for them, but I think they thought there's value in this policy, and it was good to have the transparency and the information to staff, as well as some guidelines and guardrails for our staff as we move forward in really embracing social media here in the district. And Lori Blakesley, who was instrumental in this, couldn't be here with us tonight, but she did a large amount of work, as did Ellen, as we worked through this. So, the why, we wanted to make sure that we have transparency to our social media users, which includes our families and our kids, and to our staff members. So, that means the purpose of why we have social media here in the district, what the rules are for using the district's provided social media, and transparency as far as making sure that we're actively using our social media and that we're using it to the purpose and the potential of what that social media is. Kristin has done an amazing job of keeping our social media current. and really staying on top of all of the social media that she can, and then reaching out to the schools and training them. And hopefully, this policy and the rules and the accompanying guidelines that we're going to put together will allow our schools as well to stay on top of it, as well as Kristen does here for the district. We also wanted to make sure that we are being compliant. As social media has evolved, unfortunately, the laws that require compliance with social media have not. So we are applying a card catalog to the internet when it comes to retaining and archiving social media. We have record retention laws that we need to retain our social media posts. We have to comply with our student privacy requirements of FERPA and the Wisconsin analogous statute. And then we also need to make sure that social media is accessible under the ADA and under the IDEA. And absent a policy, it's hard to demonstrate that compliance to those who may be looking at what we're doing. So we started a drafting process. We got a committee together who had had representation from various places in the district, including school board members, David Harswick from the GBA. We had principals, we had staff from Teaching and Learning, which was Jane Delkor, Tina Arnold, who represented Library and Media Specialists at Washington. And Lori will tell you that Washington has one of the best Facebook pages here in the district with what Tina is doing with that Facebook page, Amy Sturks, who is a technology integrator, Vicky Santa Crochet, again, Jean from the Human Resources Point of View, and then Lori, Kristen, Ellen, and I were there, working with the committee. We did invite some teacher representatives. They did commit to the committee, but due to their schedules, they were unable to serve on the committee. But we did send them all of our materials that we had developed and asked for their input as well. And we met three times to conduct this work. So our desired results were that we, our first desired result that Lori was very, very insistent on is that this would align with our value of engagement. We want our social media policy to embrace engagement and to allow for that back-and-forth interaction with our parents and our community members. We wanted to make sure we knew who was going to be responsible for overseeing our social media sites and who was responsible for retaining those sites, and then provide guidance to our students, parents, and the public regarding our expectations when engaging on our sites, regarding appropriate content on social media, such as student photos, student records, staff photos, endorsements, and copyrighted material and intellectual property. We want to make sure that staff has guidance on using social media as an instructional tool and that Lori's department had guidance regarding who could set up social media accounts, whether they be staff members, a department, or co-curricular group, and then provide guidance to staff regarding use of social media for professional and personal use. We, when we got together as a committee, that first night that we met, we had gathered sample policies from across the nation, some very large urban school districts, such as New York City, as well as small school districts, school districts here in Wisconsin. And then we used information from professional resources, such as NSPRO, the National School Public Relations Association, I got that acronym correctly, and information from the National School Board Association as well. The group broke into two different groups and identified policy language in those examples that would work for the district and policy language that would not work for the district. We then provided, they then provided comments and changes after we drafted the proposed policies and rules, and we did that for two meetings, provided feedback on what Ellen and I had drafted based on people's input and comments, and then the committee also crafted an implementation plan. I'm having a hard time with the clicker. So the purpose of the policy and rules are set forth in the documents, as you can see, but again, I'm not going to read this to you, but it really is to embrace that transparency and be reflective of the district's mission and vision and to, again, be, honor the district's value of engagement. So the end result was drafting the social media policy and then three rules. One, for guidelines on how to set up those accounts and how those accounts would be administered, and then guidelines for employee and board member use, and then guidelines for student use of social media. So a high-level overview of the social media policy, we included definitions, and the feedback we received from the committee, as well as from the GBA Executive Board, was that those definitions were really critical to understanding the policy and understanding what the policy and the rule apply to. The policy addresses the approval and creation and oversight of district-sponsored social media sites. Most importantly, in order to set up a district-sponsored site, you must obtain approval from the employee supervisor and then approval from the school and community relations department. And this is really to make sure that we don't have duplicative sites, because we're going to talk about the cost of retaining, and to make sure that we are using social media for what it's intended to be used for. So a social media site set up for purposes of giving announcements to kids as to when play practice would be or when events were coming up for that particular event, that may not be a good use of social media versus other avenues that are available to communicate with kids for those purposes. We define acceptable use of district-sponsored social media, prohibited use, and then who was going to be responsible for monitoring district-sponsored social media sites. We also address accessibility, and importantly, no closed networks or groups, because that is not the intent of social media, to have a closed network or group, cutting off engagement from all of our community members. We want to allow public commenting and reply and public messaging. We address the application of laws and regulations of district policies and procedures of district-sponsored social media, and then the retention of those social media sites compliant with Wisconsin Public Records Law.
Can I ask about the closed group?
Yep.
I know, I was just at the parent superintendent group meeting last week, and they talked about having the ability to do business as a parent network and so that people don't have to show up for meetings and things, and then they'll have sign-ups and all those kinds of things. And that they actually have, they say, as a closed group for doing business in, so that they can sign up and volunteer and all that kind of stuff without having it be all over social media. Is that what you're talking about, that you'll eliminate?
If it's a district-approved, if it's a district-approved site and it's governed by our record retention law, so our PTO and PTA sites, those would be separate from the district.
Okay.
So they could?
So they could do what they're doing, but they can't have it attached. They can't have a link to what their, to their site on our district website. I mean, on their, on their social, or their, their school's Facebook page.
If it's a closed group, they could not.
But they can, they can establish a closed group outside of the district's social media.
And Kristen can speak to this.
What a lot of our PTO Facebook pages do right now is they're typically open groups, and then they share our school information on their pages.
Okay, but there are, there is at least one school that uses some sort of a closed group. That's what they call it. But, so where is that?
That would not be part of our policy. We would not be governing that site.
Okay, so it wouldn't be allowed, it wouldn't be allowed the way it is now. Maybe it's not even on, I don't know where it is.
Well, it would be allowed.
So I'll, I'll give you an example. We did have a school where the PTO set up a true social media site that was announcing events and activities and using it to communicate the school events and the PTO events. They had that set up as a closed group site, because they didn't want certain people to be in the know of what was going on with the PTO. That is not permitted under this policy. If it's going to be a PTO page linked to the district, using our logos, using the school's name, that would not be permitted.
Okay, all right.
But there's, part of this policy is education, so there's many other ways that you can do. You can use Sign Up Genius, that's a great way, goes through district email to get people to sign up where it's not broadcasted to the public. Really simple and easy way to rectify that issue.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Okay. So the guidelines for district use of social media, Rule One, set up those procedures for approving the creation of district-sponsored social media sites. They provide the guidelines for district content and the guidelines for monitoring third-party content. We wanted to be transparent to our public that we are not creating a public forum for discussion and what the rules would be for removing certain content that violated our policy and our purpose of that social media site. I have a bad clicker. Rule Two then talks about the guidelines for employee and board member use of social media. We wanted to provide the guidelines for employees and using district-sponsored social media sites, guidelines for using social media for student learning, personal use versus district use, staff's social media sites and district students, and then guidelines for use by school board members. And then Rule Three talks about guidelines for student use, that if it's used to support the educational environment and encourage parent and student communication, that use of social media sites need to adhere to all district policies when posting or commenting on district-sponsored social media sites. Accessing of social media on a district network with district devices is subject to our Responsible Use Policy, and the process when a student feels unsafe, victimized, or uncertain about a post. So as I stated, there is a budgetary impact of this. Currently, Lori and Kristen are budgeting $5,000 to archive and retain district's social media sites. Because we will now be archiving and retaining, under this policy, other school sites and sports sites and our activity sites, because that would be required under the law, we are going to need to budget $12,000 for the archiving and retaining of that, those sites and that content.
So is there a date, is there a timeframe where you will retain that information and get rid of it?
By law, we're required to retain it for seven years.
Is it, is it an unlimited amount?
It is not. We pay for the data. Kristen will know, but knows-
Yeah, we pay per record. So every like, comment, post, picture is a record. So currently, we go over 3,000 records per month with only archiving 59 pages.
Just by liking something?
Is a record. Every, every message that someone messages to our page is a record. Every response is a record, so it's significant.
Right now, pending before the Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals, which encompasses Michigan, and the case originated on a Michigan, a community member made an open records request for a school board member's personal Facebook page, because the school board member was conducting board business on her Facebook, her personal Facebook page, and the individual alleged that because they were conducting board business on a personal Facebook page, that then converted the personal Facebook page into a official government Facebook page and therefore was subject to the public records law. So this is a topic that's in the forefront and is creating a lot of case law right now. And we know for certain that district-approved and district-sponsored social media sites are subject to the public records law, and we are required to retain that information under the DPI's record retention schedule.
How did you determine the amount? Is that going to be enough, is what I'm looking at? Is that budget going to be enough?
I think that was what kind of Lori was saying. We were going to, you know, start at 12,000 and kind of see how it goes, but what you're getting at is, right, every page we add adds more records.
Right, and I think as people, I mean, we want people to follow social media. We want people to weigh in. We want feedback and tell us things. So I think that, I think, you know, if, I think we just have to be available and willing to flex that amount. I mean, I think if we need to archive everything, including the thumbs up, I think that, well, but that's what it is. And I think it's important that it's there, but I, boy, charging for that is really interesting. So I just want to make sure there's enough money in that budget, because I wouldn't want to have to ever say, we don't weigh in, because, you know, I mean-
There's no disclaimer on the page. Make sure you really want to like this, so that we have to pay to retain this.
But do you know what I mean?
Absolutely.
Just like a lot, because they like.
The tweets and retweets, all of that is retained as well.
Even the retweets?
The retweets are retained.
Okay. So we, do we pay the same amount for a thumbs up as we would a comment?
We pay by record.
Yeah.
I mean, photos and videos take up, I believe, more space on Archive Social's site. I'd have to get more clarity on that, but we do.
I'm watching their faces over here.
Yeah, how many?
A thumbs up?
They're charged by the data, it's charged by the data. So the other thing that is important to note, that Archive Social, who is who we contract with, we did an RFP, and they really are, they have the monopoly on the market, because they have the best way of retaining this, if we would have to reproduce it. They can only archive social, web-based social media, so they cannot archive Snapchat. And you guys would probably know better what the other apps are, because I'm not. So we are only allowing Instagram, Snapchat, I'm sorry, Instagram, Twitter, and Facebook, because Snapchat cannot be archived. And we have had principals' requests to have Snapchat pages or accounts, or I don't Snapchat. So, but we can't archive it, because it's a app-based and not web-based.
So do we pay by amount of data, or do we pay per record? Because those are opposites of each other.
I guess I'd have to get more clarity from Archive Social.
I, I believe it's the data, and each of the record creates the data, based on what Lori had said. But we can get you that information, Andrew.
I'm just curious. Who knew?
You guys may have more, may understand better than we do.
No, they're getting a little concerned.
It follows you everywhere.
About how much you're costing us.
Or how much you're archiving.
You have tweets a lot.
Good, 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 good.
And that's what I'm saying, we don't want people not to, exactly. It just is, do we have enough money in there, is what I budgeted, that's all.
So a large piece of this will be the implementation plan, and the committee weighed in, as well as the Executive Board from GBA also had some good ideas as to how we're going to implement this, because again, this is a shift, and it will take a little bit to get staff accustomed to it, but it's work that everyone believes is vital. So the, Kristen and Lori will be, they are in the process, or they will be developing the following. We will be putting a communication plan in place for all administrators and staff. We will develop a method for employees to submit questions, and we'll publish those questions in a frequently asked question document that will be available to all staff members, probably on our internet, in case people have questions that keep coming up about the policy and the rules that apply to the district and staff. We will develop process documents for the approval of existing and new social media sites. All existing social media sites will require approval, because that is our only way to get them in the Archive Social queue to have them being retained. We need to get the address and the administrators and get Archive Social to be able to have access to those accounts. And we do have, we did do an inventory prior to the start of the committee work, and that's how Lori came up with that $12,000 figure, to get an idea as to how many social media sites exist. We will be developing best practice guidelines for approved district-sponsored social media sites. And that's really the who, what, where, when, why document, that will break it down for those individuals who are the administrators of those sites. When I met with the Executive Board from the GBA, one of the individuals who's on the Executive Board administers her Facebook page at her school, and said she just wants a one-page summary, so when she is updating her Facebook page, she knows exactly what she, excuse me, what she can do and what she can't do. And so we'll be developing that for those administrators. And then Tim Flood served on the committee, and we will be meeting with administrators and activities directors, because a large portion of our Facebook pages and social media accounts are the activities and the athletics. And then it said present to GBA if desired. I did offer to the Executive Board that Lori and I would be happy to meet with the representative assembly as well. And we will be giving administrators talking points for staff for our back-to-school meetings and do a one-page document highlighting the important pieces of the policy and rules for staff. And then, including throughout the year, reminders in the staff scoop about the policy and rules. So that's a high-level summary. There's much more there, but I wanted to make sure that we're honoring your time and giving you the information you need to move this forward.
Any questions? Chris?
Thank you. You may have said it, I didn't quite catch it. The court case in Michigan is, does that district include Wisconsin?
It does not include Wisconsin. It does not include Wisconsin. So the case from the Sixth Circuit would be advisory to the Seventh Circuit, which is what includes Wisconsin. But the Council of School Attorneys and the National School Board Association is watching that case very closely and they filed an amicus brief, which means a friend of the court brief weighing in on what their opinion was of the, of the matter.
Do you know what it was?
Uh, their opinion is that it should not constitute, it should not constitute a record under the Michigan Public Records Law because of it being a personal page. But they will, we're watching the case and they'll have an update, uh, the NSBA will have an update on that.
Do you have the specifics of, I mean, what constitutes board business on your personal Facebook page? Do you have a, an example?
Um, let's see.
Do you know what this case person did?
Yeah.
Yes, they were, um, it was on the individual's Facebook page and then other board members were weighing in.
Oh, so it was multiple?
Yep, yes. Um, I think the, the real, the real thing and, and what is included in the guidelines regarding the board's use of, of social media is to stay away from essentially conducting a meeting through social media because that meeting is not posted and that violates the open meetings law with respect to postings and the conducting of business.
So it was more than one board member?
It was more than one board member. Yep. Yep. But it was using the personal page. So some of them were friends outside and they were discussing a topic that had, that was going to be on the board's agenda on that personal Facebook page.
Okay. But we wouldn't do that on any page. Conduct business on, I mean, we don't conduct business through email because it's not allowed because of open records or, or meeting laws.
Right.
Yeah. So it's a general, I mean, that's our guidance with everything that we do.
Correct.
And, Andrew?
So, you know, the thing, the thing that attracts attention and gets concern is the, you know, saying of something unpopular or downright mean on a personal webpage. And we certainly have heard, we certainly have heard stories in the media about people doing things that I think most of the general public would be appalled that someone was disciplined at work for, even if it was, you know, things we would never consider here. At, at the same time, I, I guess I'm wondering, my hope is that even if, even if the group of things that a person may say that, that you are allowed to get them in trouble at work for, I'm hoping the amount that we would actually pursue would be the, the worst, the worst of the worst. Things that are so bad that they can't even credibly face students anymore. I mean, the most, I can't even think of something I would even want to say in this forum. It would be, it would have, I'm, is, I'm hoping it would have to be that bad before we would do it.
So Andrew and I have had discussions about this. There's language in the staff guidelines that talk about, um, speech that is conducted on social media that is not protected by the First Amendment. There is speech that you can have on social media that would not be protected under First Amendment. And it goes to, uh, speech that you are having that, um, is related to your job duties and that you are not speaking, um, as a private citizen regarding that. So for example, um, some of the examples that I provided to Andrew were people who identified themselves as a teacher and then made a racist comment on their social media site and it was open to the public. That would not be protected under the First Amendment. And I think those are the examples that Andrew is, is citing too. We have had staff, unfortunately, on various media outlet Facebook pages, we, they've been drawn to our attention. We don't go looking for these things, but have been brought to Jean's attention or my attention where staff have, um, provided, uh, student identifiable information and it's, it's, you don't need to say the student's name in order for the student to be identifiable. And that has been out there. Those staff have not been disciplined. They have been cautioned that that's not appropriate and they are potentially in violation of that student's privacy and confidentiality. But we have not, to this day, disciplined someone for a social media post. And we would continue with the, um, coaching and the discussion with staff going forward.
Brenda?
What would you say are the two or three biggest shifts in these policies that will either create the most questions or, or cause people to, um, have to relearn, you know, their, everything they do?
The approval process?
Yeah. That's what I was gonna say.
That's what I was gonna say too. Yep.
So before this, they were allowed to start a page? Okay.
Yep. And then I would say, um, the recognition for staff that, and I, we had this discussion with the GBA. We know staff are very well intentioned, but when you post a picture on your personal page of your classroom, that's a student record. And that really is not something that, because then you have to retain that. It's a student record and if a parent asks for a copy of that, the parent has a right to it. So it's just the education of staff of, if you're, um, you want to talk about the great things in your classroom and actually Brent Berkstrom, who's on the GBA Executive Board says, he just reshares the.
Chapel's information.
Chapel's information or Southwest, Southwest information rather than posting it him's original content on his personal page. So that's a great way to still be able to do that, uh, to be able to share the weekend pictures and the information that's already publicly available. So I think that's probably another, I think staff knows it, but they're just so proud and they're doing such great things that they want to be able to get that out into the public. But we, we have to be cognizant of that.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing done, we'll move that forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And that concludes our report session.
All right. Thank you, Katie. Next we'll move to organizational support work session. That'll be facilitated by Chris Rehman.
This evening we have no discussion items under business, nor human resources. But we do have a need for a closed session and bear with me while I read, uh, that recommend, recommended motion, excuse me, that the, uh, recommended motion is that the board convene in closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.85, uh, sub 1C, considering employment promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employer over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility in pursuit to Wisconsin Statute 19.85, uh, section 1, uh, sub F, concerning financial, medical, social or personal histories or disciplinary investigation of charges against specific persons except where par, paragraph B applies, which if discussed in public would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigation to wit personal matters. The meeting will begin in open session to consider the appropriate motion for a closed session, so provided by law.
Second.
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Doran?
Aye.
Sit me down.
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
McQuaid?
Aye.
Wait.
Aye.
This one?
And that one?
And then Michelle's the white one?
You have been watching the Green Bay Area Public School District's Board of Education Meeting. Please visit the school district's website, www.gbaps.org to view the program again. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling 920-448-2025 or by email at communications@gbaps.org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and/or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.